Good evening. And welcome to the Select Board meeting of April 22nd. It's very nice to see all of you here. We are on the third floor of the Bennington Fire Facility. My name is Ginny Jenkins. I have the pleasure of chairing this board, and I'll ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves. Hi, Nancy White.
Hi, good evening. Thank you all for being here. Sarah Perrin.
I'm Ed Woods.
Hi, I'm Tom Haley.
And I'm Jean Conner.
Excellent. And also with us tonight, we have our town manager, Stu Hurt. We have Nancy Lively is back, who takes stellar minutes. And we have Josh Boucher from Cat TV filming the meeting live as he usually does, and we thank Cat TV very much for doing that. All right, we'll begin as we usually do with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ed, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its common purpose, which stands by my decision, I am a God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as our own.
Thank you very much, Ed. And Tom, would you read our vision statement that guides our work?
I will. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, and resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
And I'm going to ask people, so it's a little-known fact, but the further you are back, the better we can hear you up here. Weird acoustics. All right. So next up is the Consent Agenda for the purpose of discussion. Could I have a motion to accept? Some of, thank you, a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes, the warrants? And I don't believe there was a liquor license, right?
There are liquor licenses. They were added to the packet, so they are available to you. I don't know that we got them to everybody. They came in very late today.
Okay. And the liquor license? Any discussion?
I did not get the liquor license. I picked up mine early. Just for the purposes, can we mention who those are?
Please.
Can you tell us? I don't, it's not in my packet.
I didn't get liquor license.
They're in the signature.
Ah, okay.
Last page.
Here we go. Good point. All right. They are first-class license renewal Harvest Brewing, Kevin's, and Old Castle Theater Company, outside consumption permit renewals Harvest Brewing and Kevin's, second-class license and tobacco renewals Dollar General, third-class license renewal Kevin's. All right. Thank you. All right. Any discussion? I have a couple of things in the minutes.
I had one correction, but I've already given it.
Go ahead.
It was, Sarah's name was misspelled in one location.
Okay.
Thanks. It's always said the same. I'm not used to it, so I let it fly.
All right. Let's see, on page six, line 263, GBICs changed their name. It's now GBCS, and I believe it stands for Greater Bennington Community Services. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So both, yeah, both the initials and the name. And then also on page six, line 267, when we had the discussion about road closures, what we were discussing was road closures were contingent on the approval of the police department and notification of neighboring properties. Not their approval, but notification. And let's see, so that's on 267, that's also on line 276. And then on line 297 on page seven, rather than the energy committee plan needs to be adopted, it's actually the local emergency management plan.
Where are you?
Right here, on page seven.
Yes, thank you.
Line 297.
Yep.
Okay. That's all I have. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, could I, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we're good. All right. We are coming up to public comment. We have had a lot of concerns about not being able to hear, both for people that are here and also on Cat TV. So we've turned up the volume, and we're going to ask everyone to use the center mic, which seems to work a little better anyway, and we're going to ask you to speak directly into the mic, and then hopefully we will all be able to hear what you have to say. Want to remind everyone that public comment is for the purpose of sharing information that's for the good of all, that is not on the agenda. And you have up to three minutes. We have a new timekeeper. It's Jean, and she has a very nifty little card, which she will wave, and hopefully you will see it so that you won't be surprised when the three minutes is up. It's not a time for discussion. If you do have, if you do make a comment that we can respond to, we will do that at the end, after everyone has finished making their comments. And always, remember to be civil and respectful. And when you finish making your comment, please sit down, and we will address your comment if we can at the end of the comment period. Okay. So with that, we have first up Sam Rustino to discuss hydrant flushing and crosswalk maintenance, maybe. And please state your name and town.
Naturally. I know the rules and regulations.
Okay.
They haven't changed. Sam Rustino, Bank of Vermont. Yes, hydrant flushing. As you know, not many people read the banner, not many people read or look at social media. So I just want to say the signage that's around town has been a big plus to let people know, because now it's a two-week process for hydrant flushing. Secondly, as the weather's starting to get better, and yes, I know in May, at the Four Corners, they do the piano compass, and I hope it gets done this year, I would hope that the town of Bennington is frugal enough that when the streets of Bennington are shut down, they can at least address two lines at the busy intersections of crosswalks. Utilize that time. The streets get shut down when there's no traffic because they're painting the piano compass at the same time. If staff is available to paint those crosswalks, that would be a big plus. And I ask the citizens of Bennington between now and whenever these crosswalks get painted, be mindful of people in the worn crosswalks, because they're very hard to see. And thirdly, as you know, with the winds that have happened and cleanup, people like to do controlled burns or burn without a fire permit. I strongly urge that if you're going to be burning, refrain from it, because at this level, it's high. There's an exception, because from reports, the Forest Service is doing a controlled burn. But for residents, you have to be mindful of the burning. I think burn permits are available. I don't know if the town of Bennington has them to offer, or reluctant because of the high fire risk at hand. But they do have campfire permits and also burn permits. Be mindful of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Maria Corrales, minority.
Yes. So I wrote this down because I tend to get nervous speaking.
Please introduce yourself in town of residence.
Hi, I'm Maria Corrales. I'm a resident of Bennington, and I am a voter as well. Now, because I belong to my minority group, I would like my civil liberties honored with our select board members showing impartiality and objectivity. Because whenever proponents attempt discussions not liked, they're frequently and systematically silenced. A subject of current concern and controversy is the discussion of our select board members having powers contrary to Vermont's constitution. Respectfully, you're servants of the people, and at all times legally and accountable to them, and we have the right to reform our government. So our select board members and our town managers choose which voting people are put on the charter review committee. In essence, they know any change might diminish their power, and therefore they keep control. So I'm asking, can we have ordinary people become members of this charter review committee as opposed to you selecting who should be on there? Can we vote on it, a ballot of the number of people that can be on this charter review committee?
Thank you. All right. Phyllis Poste, trash on the road?
I have a burden. Phyllis Poste, I live and I work here in Bennington.
Thank you.
I have a burden, because when you come into town, usually you would want to see the old First Church, and you'd want to see the museum, the Bennington Museum, and the covered bridges. I drive for Defore, her school bus, and my route takes me out to the three bridges. Every day, I go there four times a day. I would encourage any one of you to take a trip out there before May the 5th. May the 5th is cleanup day again. But before that, I thought it was May the 5th, I thought, if I read it correctly.
Fourth.
Oh, the fourth, fourth, fifth. Right now, it is littered with trash. And going to see, going to these bridges, which are really pretty, historic, something that not all towns have, to have to go through all, to see all this trash on either side of the road. Someone who likes Angry Orchard frequents the road quite regularly, and he or she likes to throw the bottle out so that it hits either a rock or it hits a tree, and it smashes and there's glass all over the place. And that's not enough, then they have to throw the six-pack carton out. If you go, you can see it. It's deplorable. And I drive the bus, and I look at it, and it got so bad that I decided that I would start to pick it up. My husband was very good in driving me, but he said he won't do it again because it's, you know, it's not safe, because it's only a two-lane road, and I'm jumping in out of the car to put the trash in, and he's worried about someone rear-ending us and that. So does that not fall under road maintenance or anything? I mean, that I have to look at this all year round, and I just... This is what I collected just for one, just once. And this is just the bottles, not the trash. It's deplorable. Go take a ride and see. My last comment is, we talk about having people come in and draw them into Bennington. When I go home to Massachusetts, and they ask me where I come from, I tell them Bennington. And more than not, what they will say to me is, oh, that's where Bennington Potter's is. And unfortunately, Bennington Potter's closed with the pandemic. I don't know if anyone ever goes to them and encourages them to reopen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dick Dundas?
Earth Day.
Well, that was a segue into what I'm going to talk about.
You're going to have to, you didn't have to turn the mic up.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
How about that?
Or you have to scrunch, yeah.
This is Earth Day. You all know that. It's important. Scott, thank you. This is a Buddhist teaching. The earth is you. You are the earth. When you realize there is no separation, you fall completely in love with this beautiful planet. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Is there anyone that did not sign up that would like to speak? All right. So let's see, in response, Maria, the Charter Review Committee was a decade ago. I think, I wasn't...
Not a decade ago.
I wasn't on the board yet. So it was close. It was close. And it was, it was, and so there is not a Charter Review Committee. It was quite a while ago. It was, I was not on the board yet, so it was...
So on the legislation page, it says it's reviewed every five years.
Yep. So we're overdue. We don't need to, well, yeah, so we could. We have not considered, we have not considered it. Yeah. I would say that it is, as we know, it's not all that common. But, so if your request is, we should have a Charter Review Committee, then certainly we will take that under consideration. Thank you. Thank you for alerting us.
Can I ask a question on that?
And then, no, because it's not discussion time. But it's, you know, the, I think, is it, is your question to her, or is it a question to us?
If you read the town charter, I believe it says it's supposed to be reviewed every five years.
Well, that's what she just said, so...
Actually, if I could read the charter?
Yeah, please, okay.
It says, "The Select Board may appoint a Charter Review Committee of not less than five nor more than nine members of the inhabitants of the town, and the committee to review the charter and recommend such changes therein as it finds necessary or advisable for the purpose of improving the operation of town government."
Okay.
So it is a may, it is not a shall.
Okay. And it's not an every five, is it an every five years, then? Where's that information? Please, where is that information?
It doesn't talk about it in this section, but the five years does ring a bell.
So, okay, so we'll take this under consideration. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Road maintenance, Stu, I'm going to punt that to you. Do you want to speak to...
Well, if I could ask, where was this located?
Well, I didn't want to go on my three minutes, but you saw the area, and you go down to where the other goes into Silk, and goes into Dale Road, and Silk Road leads to the Silk Road Bridge. That is completely littered with trash. Then you get back onto Dale, and you go to the Austin Hill Road, and that is even worse. And that leads out to Murphy, which on the left side, you turn left, you go to Henry's Bridge, you go right, and you go to Paper Mill Bridge.
But where was this located?
That was on those roads, and I picked up trash.
So you picked up all of this trash? Okay. Thank you.
And there's a turn around.
And thank you.
Yes, and thank you. And thank you. So, Stu, is there, can you comment on whether we...
We don't, I mean, we don't ask our Public Works folks to regularly do street maintenance of that kind, but if there are large accumulations of trash in any one location, just give the town office a call. We'll send people out to pick it up.
Ben, there is a turnaround at the, at the Paper Mill Bridge, where there's a terrible dam. Well, that's flooded with trash. People jump their clothes and whatever.
Okay. We do place a barrel there. I'm surprised people don't choose to use it.
It's just not nice for visitors to see that.
I agree.
Thank you. Very informative comments. Thank you. All right. So next up, it is actually our pleasure to welcome the next four speakers. They are coming up as part of Regional Economic and Workforce Update, and I don't know, let's see, this is part of, we thought as part of April Career Month, it would be nice to have an economic and workforce update. And so we have Jonathan Cooper. Are you guys all four going to come up? So Jonathan, if you guys want to use the podium, you may, because you may have comments you want to share. Just speak into the mic, please. So we have Jonathan Cooper from Bennington County Regional Commission. Shall I introduce everyone, or are you going to introduce them?
Yeah, sure, we can start with that. That sounds good.
Jonathan, you're going to have to speak really.
I can do my, is that better?
Much.
All right. So, I'm sorry, you could, you're in the middle of introductions.
No, I was going to say, did you want me to introduce everyone, or do you want to do it?
Please, that would be nice.
All right, all right. So we have Jonathan Cooper from Bennington County Regional Commission. We have Matt Harrington from Southwest Vermont Chamber of Commerce. We have Wendy Morse, Regional Director for the Vermont Department of Labor in Bennington, Rutland, and Addison County. Yes, but in, but actually located in Bennington. And we have Eamon Trump from the Better Bennington Corporation. And I will turn it over to you.
All right. Is that, if that's good with everyone, that's good with me. So again, Jonathan Cooper, I manage a community and economic development program with the BRCRC, where I have been for the last eight years, and have the pleasure of working with nine exceptional people who bring a whole suite of services that I think our executive director, Bill Colvin, had detailed at a previous Select Board meeting a few months ago. But today, we're sort of focusing on the economic and workforce development activities that are ongoing. I had the chance to speak with the three of my colleagues, who will speak shortly thereafter, to coordinate a little bit of what we wanted to talk about, so we're not doing too much overlap, et cetera. So some of my Career Month comments will sort of be limited to what I feel is the most fun part of it, which is the column series in the Bennington Banner, where we give some of our businesses, our entrepreneurs, some of our larger employers, the opportunity to sort of talk about what they do and why they do it, and why Bennington or Bennington County is a great place to do it. And that has really three, three reasons for readers. Either to say, well, this is something I didn't know about, and I'm glad to learn about this business that's operating in the downtown, or operating in our business parks, or operating elsewhere in the county. To think about, this is something, this is an interesting career that might be for me, or for a loved one, or for a child, a grandchild, that I want to have, have a bright future here, to stay here in the next 10, 20 years. And third, to encourage people to realize that this is a great place to do business, as entrepreneurial activity is one of the best forms of workforce development that we have. And so this past year, we've been able to hear from W Collective, once again, where they belong, in Bennington. I've heard from the Agency of Transportation, Barnes &amp; Didden up in Manchester, and a few other employers that have really taken the opportunity to put their thoughts down on paper, as well as Vermont Posn Boots, with that clear-minded vision of support for first responders. And that's an element that we really take a lot of pride in, in trying to get some variety regionally, one industry to another, a lot of women-owned businesses, et cetera, that can make, that have been making their mark throughout the county and throughout the city or the town, and want to sort of put the word out there. There's two other elements I'd like to talk about in my brief time tonight. The second has to do with some trends. What's remarkable sometimes to remember, even in rural America, that economic trends nationwide are economic trends here at home. And one specifically to point to here has to do with Class A office space, and that the trends we've seen with respect to the need for office workers to be in person coming out of the pandemic, you can see that with your own eyes in the parking lots of some of these buildings, one of which I happen to work in, where some days the parking lot is full, and some days the parking lot is not. It's very much unfull, but that's not because productivity is taking a dive, it's because there's been some shifts in trends for where people are doing the work that they need to do. You can also see that in the real estate listings on Route, exit three on Route 7, where the Orbis Companies had the opportunity to rethink what its corporate presence looks like in Bennington County. Again, not because of diminished productivity or headcount, but rather because it's adapting to a trend that we're seeing nationwide in the presence on site of office workers in those professions. That ties directly into a third element that I'll talk to in just a moment. But another trend that I sort of wanted to bring up is that Bennington is now appearing on lists that maybe it didn't appear on in the past. Lists like whatever the site selection entity is that brings Chipotle's into towns, or brings Starbucks into towns, and has them create new buildings for these things. We're seeing some interesting trends in where Bennington is showing up, in terms of assessments of where are, where is a smart place for a good investment. I think that that's a lot of good energy we've seen. A few months back, being profiled in Vermont Business Magazine as sort of having an active and vibrant downtown, it's something that we've long felt, is that rising tide that lifts all boats, and to see the investments in certain places in North Side Drive is certainly a welcome thing. But going back to that trend about working from home, that leads to the third thing I'd like to talk about with the balance of the time, and that's connectivity. An area where there's been a great deal of investment, as you know, through the Southern Vermont Communications Union District, of, with whom we are happy to partner, sort of as an operational staff. But two out of the three jobs in Bennington County are held by Bennington County residents. And if we are seeing trends such that people don't need to travel to work anymore, well then having outstanding connectivity is essentially an imperative to make sure that those trends are trends that Bennington County families and households can adapt to, because they have the connectivity that they need to have to fulfill those roles in whatever way is appropriate. So we're now down to fewer than 20 residences throughout the Communications Union District that have not yet received or had the opportunity to receive high-class connectivity in fiber-optic cable. That's a, that's one area where we're really bucking the trend, because that's what people talk about doing everywhere else in the country, and that's what we're getting done here in Bennington County. But we really want to make sure that we give people the opportunity through our Career Month articles to talk about the things that we want to celebrate, because you got to celebrate the things that you want more of. And we want to give people the opportunity to adapt to the trends that are emerging in workplaces, to whatever infrastructural requirements are necessary, not least of which would be through connectivity. Did I get it all, guys? Are we done? No? All right. With that, though, I'm happy to answer any questions thereafter, but I'd be glad to pass the microphone to Mr. Harrington. You're next.
All right. All right, I'm actually going to... So I get to be the data geek for tonight, and everybody else is going to have great rosy presentations as well. My role as the Executive Director of the Southwestern Vermont Chamber of Commerce for the past eight years has afforded me the privilege of witnessing the heartbeat of our local economy. It's a pulse that reflects both the resilience of our community and the challenges that lie ahead. The national economic scene presents a paradox for us. Kind of on one hand, we have current indicators suggesting we have a very robust American economy, but on the other, we have many that are left behind, struggling to make ends meet. I think we feel this very acutely in our rural communities like Bennington. Along with this complicated post-COVID economy comes the usual fickleness of a presidential election year, where uncertainty looms large and has ripple effects on our businesses, on our consumers, and the community at large. Last week, when Jonathan and Wendy and all of us met, I asked if we should pull together a survey. I was happy to administer that through the chamber, but just know that I was in an effort with the rest of the group here. We collected about over, about 50 business owners who filled out that survey, and I want to share some of those data points with you today. I'll do a general overview, but the Select Board has much more granular detail. I think one of the biggest questions was, how would you rate the current state of your local economy for your business on a scale from one to five, with one being very poor and five being excellent? 2.3% said excellent, so yay. But 40% indicated four, or good, and another 40% indicated three, or fair. 14% indicated two, or poor, and 4.7% indicated one, or very poor. And so our interpretation of that data is that Bennington's economy is steady and stable, with about 80% feeling okay about the economy, with some real concern about the nearly 20% struggling at the poor or very poor levels. When asked, what impact, if any, have recent national, state, local policies had on your business operations or growth prospects? Our businesses answered with a variety of open-ended questions, comments, this was open-ended, so we batched them into four big categories. Economic policies and inflation impact, which respondents expressed concerns about inflation caused by national policies, leading to decreased discretionary income, which we kind of have all felt, and that, of course, reduces the consumer spending and increased cost of goods and services. They also mentioned the impact of taxation, including tax increases and the removal of rebates, and these were some of the more nuanced answers to some of their businesses' profitability. Number two was regulatory or policy... Number two was regulatory or policy changes. Business owners highlighted various regulatory challenges such as cannabis potency caps, which I think is a new one for a lot of us as, as new cannabis shops have opened up in downtown. Advertising regulations, as we've seen in Vermont over time, liquor license denials as liquor licenses have become more stringent, and new federal funding requirements affecting their operations. They also mentioned concern about education costs and policies, as well as the impact of immigration restrictions and social taxes like paid family leave. Cost of living and business operations was number three in that kind of bucket of four. The rising costs of housing, utilities and rental space are cited as challenges to the business growth and profitability. Additionally, concerns about high interest rates, labor shortages and increased business costs, including software and fuel expenses are mentioned. And finally, number four, market conditions and industry-specific challenges. Some responses pointed out industry-specific challenges such as healthcare, compensation issues, changes in insurance policies, especially affecting caterers, interestingly enough, and then the impact of online shopping on local businesses, which we felt for over two decades so far. The next question, and again, I'll kind of hit some of the highlights on this. When asked, in the next 12 to 18 months, do you anticipate any significant challenges or opportunities for your business? Again, we had a wide variety of responses and I'll group some of these together. Housing economic impact was the number one and that's no surprise there. Our employee, employers are finding it extremely hard to hire staff that can also live here in Bennington or in the county. And obviously, construction and availability and affordability are mentioned within that housing nut. National political influence, so I mentioned in my opening around the presidential election and there was just a lot, I was almost surprised at how much Benningtonians were paying attention to the, the national stage and the presidential election and what that really means for their local business at home. Business challenges and opportunities, there's a rising cost of goods and utilities, we've all felt that. I think finding qualified staff and then the economic climate in general. I think that that speaks to more of the attitude of the, the economic climate. Labor market and recruitment issues, this was again in hiring qualified professionals and I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment with some solutions. Influence and financial strain, or sorry, inflation and financial strain, so again, feeling that, that, that constant beat of the inflation and it not coming down. And then finally, some seasonal business considerations, which, you know, I think Bennington also, much like Manchester and some of the other places, feel those peaks at, at some of the higher parts of the holidays in the summer and then feel really that drought when it comes into spring season. When asked, do you have plans to grow or expand your business in the next 12 months? 40% of respondents indicated yes, which I found extremely heartening. Over 40% of our businesses feel like they will grow in the next year. 60% indicated they wouldn't at the time. When asked, are you finding it possible to hire workers to fill job openings in your business? 40%, 45% indicated yes, which is higher than I, I expected, so they were able to find workers, but 55% indicated no, which is showing the ongoing strain of the local qualified workforce. When asked, do you have plans to retire or close your business in the next one to three years? And this is a question that really fascinates me when it comes to kind of just the age of our, of our downtown businesses and our Bennington businesses. So again, would you, would you plan to retire or close within the next three years? 80% indicated no, however, 20% indicated yes. And I think that that is a very acute problem that we have in Vermont and especially in Bennington and we at the chamber, along with our partners, really need to find some solutions about how, if they are going to retire or close their businesses, how do we make that into a turnkey solution for the next entrepreneur or business person coming out of Career Month? Finally, as we, we asked business owners, what keeps them up at night? And some of the responses were peepers and some of the responses was, I work so hard, I don't have trouble sleeping at night. But I thought a couple that were really interesting and we kind of, again, categorized them and put them together, the downtown environment. I think there's a lot of concern around the crime, drug-related activities, homelessness affecting downtown shopping and the safety alongside worries about shoplifting and lack of awareness among potential customers. Now, the one I'll, I'll hit some high level on is tourism and marketing. There are, just the fact that we need to be focusing more on our tourism and economic development with calls of greater investment in those marketing. And then personal and operational stress really kind of rose there, which again, I don't think we would have always thought of in an economic survey, but how much of a mental exhaustion is happening post-COVID on these business owners. From the chamber's perspective, here's some recommendations I might offer tonight and, I didn't check with my partners on this, so this is all me and, and they can speak for themselves. Jeanne and I have met about the downtown safety and economic vitality. We have had some ongoing discussions about that. I think it's about implementing measures to enhance downtown safety, such as increased law enforcement presence, community policing initiatives, which I know this board has worked on, and supporting programs to address the homelessness and substance use disorder. And I know we have a lot of those programs active and so it's just, how do we coordinate our efforts and, and help our businesses feel safe? Additionally, prioritize economic revitalization funding and local destination marketing funding. I will continue to beat the drum on that one. The more that we can set aside and invest back into places like the BBC or places like Vermont Begins Here, those will, I think, help attract people. I think we've got, you know, our housing challenge as well, which we're continuing to work on. We're on the Housing Committee, many of us, and so we're continuing to work on that. I think it's incentivize mixed income developments, streamlining some of the regulatory processes for construction, especially at the local level where we can. And then, you know, just continue to help partner with our developers if we can make an attractive Bennington. We have seen, and I knew Jonathan spoke to this earlier, we have seen where over the last 10 years, when we've kind of really beautified Bennington, really put it out there, people have been receptive to that. The last little part I'll share and I'll wrap up my portion tonight, and I know it's been a little bit long, but again, I was the data guy, and provide some hopefully pragmatic optimism and encouragement. As you're all well aware, based on the survey data I just shared, attracting and retaining a diverse workforce and vibrant population is essential for continuing to grow our community. And I don't know how many people know, but in January of this year, the chamber and our sister organization, the Shire Young Professionals, were one of 12 grant recipients through the Vermont Department of Tourism and Marketing, which allocated two years' worth of funding to the chamber and the young professional group for retention, relocation, recruitment of workforce to Bennington County. I won't go into all the details, you can go to relocatetovermont.com and that'll have a lot more information. I will say, we hired a new person this past week, Louis Lescari, originally from Texas, South Texas, moved his way up here three years ago to Wilmington and he has started with the chamber this past week. And within the last 30 days, we've already received six inquiries for families to move to Southwestern Vermont. And that's without turning kind of the machine on yet, so we're very excited about that. And I think, I think in leaving, you know, I would say we can't do this alone. We need to support and, we need the support and collaboration of our stakeholders, including local businesses, the educational institutions, community organizations and local government entities such as yourself. So with that, I will pass it off to, I think Wendy's coming up next with the Department of Labor.
I think, Matt, I will say I was not nearly as prepared as you were on this. And I too am a data person, but before I start going into the data, I think it's important to understand a few key terms that I want to, I want to focus on tonight, and that's labor force and what the true definition of labor force is, which is all persons between the ages of 16 to 64, years of age who are either employed or unemployed and actually looking for work. That's labor force. The unemployment rate is the actual percentage of individuals that are in, in the labor force but jobless. And the labor force participation rate is the percentage of individuals that are working or looking for work as a percentage of the total pool of available people within the working age. So this would be all individuals between the ages of 16 to 64. So I want to focus on those three terms to really talk about what's going on locally in Bennington. So we're going to start at the state level and then draw down. So at the state level, the unemployment rate is 2.2%, which is incredibly low. The labor force participation rate statewide is 65.4%, which means that there, the total, the total employed persons in Vermont is just under 348,000 statewide. The, to look at that locally, if we draw down into what's going on here in Bennington, so Bennington's unemployment rate is pretty low, it's 2.7, so it's a little bit higher, generally trends a little bit higher than it does statewide. And we have about, just under, just a little over 11,000 people in our labor force here locally. What's kind of amazing about the labor force for Bennington is it hasn't actually changed a lot in the last 20 years. It did have a peak in 2008 of just over 13,000 and it had a low during COVID of 10,261. Obviously, that was November of 21, which was, or November of 20. We did have, and we've recovered pretty well actually from COVID. So our highest unemployment rate was 14.5% in April of 2020. And then a whole year later, we, we cut that more in half, which was 6.4%. So what are we talking about when we're looking at, you know, such small numbers of unemployed individuals? In Bennington, we're looking at about 200 people, 300 people, that is a percentage of the total labor force. So we're talking really super small numbers. What is interesting about Bennington is our labor force participation rate is significantly lower than the state average and that is at 59.1%. So I think we've got some work to do. And how do we influence that? We draw people back into the labor force and we help our labor force grow by retention and attracting and retaining workers. So that's kind of what's happening at the local level. I do want to just focus on some trends that we're seeing at the Department of Labor. So we do have a really cool event coming up, which is the Job Fest, Spring Job Fest Event, which is going to be at the Deer Park. We had these, actually, this was a result of COVID. We had our first job fair outside when COVID mitigation was still a thing and, and we just found that it was so much fun to have these things outside. We find that a lot of employers and job seekers like the farmer's market feel to them and they're really laid back, people can have conversations. We have employers that attend these things that have a lot of fun, actually. You know, sometimes we've had employers show, show up with cornhole, cornhole boards, you know, to try to entice conversations with prospective job seekers, which is really cool. So we do have that coming up and that is going to be held May 16th from 11 to 2, right at the Deer Park. So far, we have 43 employers registered to attend. What's interesting is on the registration form, we ask employers, what kind of positions are they really recruiting for? So we want to know that data upfront. Most employers are looking to fill full-time, entry-level, year-round positions. The top sectors right now are healthcare, skilled trades, administrative office positions. Those are kind of the top industry areas, but I will say, they're top, but not top by much because we have some really close runner-ups, which are in hospitality, manufacturing and human services. I will say, the current challenges with a lot of the employers that we're working with, they may, they may still have some difficulty in recruiting due to the low unemployment rate and access to available labor. As I said, that number is really small, right? Two to 300 available labor pool right now. And I also want to say that that number changes every single day. So somebody leaves the, you know, leaves a job, somebody gets a job, that number is different every single day, as well as the jobs that are available are different every single day. They're not the same. Job seekers may not always find the opportunity that gets them all jazzed up, but again, this does change depending on the job level, level and the industry that they may be interested in. And again, as I just said, they change every single day. And then there's, may still be some mismatch between workforce skills experience, you know, the, the skills of the workforce and what the employer might be really looking at. And some of the data that Matt shared was, it did reflect that as well. I will say that there's a big opportunity right now. There's actually an opportunity for both employers and job seekers. Because of the lack of available labor, many employers are pulling out the stop, so to speak, right? So they're enticing individuals to come work for them. Maybe they're offering more flexible scheduling, higher starting wages, different benefits. And I will say, I think a lot of employers have had to think differently about multi-generational workforces and what that means and how to not only attract multi-generational workforces, but retain them. And it is a definite win for job seekers as well, right? Because you might have different opportunities and if you might have that mismatch in a job in a, in your work experience or your skills, you might, you very well will find an employer that is more willing to work with you and train you and, and help you develop the skills that you need to, to really work well in that role. And then I think there's a strength for Bennington as a whole and it's us, you know, all standing up here. It's just the level of collaboration in Bennington. I mean, it is just, it's incredible when you've got, you know, economic workforce development at all different levels, all bringing a piece of that, of that puzzle together, you know, and trying to make it fit. Economic development and workforce development will always have challenges and that pendulum swings all the time, but having collaboration from people in the community and our Workforce and Ed Committee locally is just an amazing group of individuals that all have a stake in workforce development. I mean, that's the kind of collaboration I think that really speaks to a community and gets things done. I'll turn it over to Jeanne.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for inviting all of us here tonight. It's been an honor to work with this panel. I'm not going to have as many statistics and data that they have. Being the Director of the BBC has been very exciting, rewarding and most certainly challenging at times. Knowing that the BBC does make a difference makes it all worthwhile and the driving force behind the countless hours it takes to get things done. The BBC is involved in many things to help boost the downtown's economy and offer events for the community to enjoy. Engaging in downtown in as many areas as possible keeps us visible and engaged. We have a strong focus on events, especially from May through October. These are the Five Hemmings Cruisins that are combined with Thursday Night Lives, Mayfest, Arts and Crafts Festival, Midnight Madness, which is going to be a triple feature this year with Hemmings and Thursday Night Live, Harvest Fest, Small Business Saturday and a festive gathering. We are also doing the ribbon cuttings for the downtown businesses and many people believe that these festivals and ribbon cuttings are events held just for the fun and the camaraderie and the energy that brings, it brings to the downtown area. There are actually so many more reasons, such as attracting visitors from near and far. The visitors come here and spend money, which boosts our local economy on and off the festival site. Spending will occur at local restaurants, in areas, in area accommodations, shopping with local merchants and more. The money spent with festival vendors also trickles into our economy. Most vendors come from out of the area and in turn spend money here. There are economic impact reasons to host these events. There are direct efforts through the visitors coming and spending. This is the initial economic change due to the event. For events like the BBC and the Chamber festivals, this is spending by attendees who can spend both at the festival and the businesses in the community. There are indirect and induced effects. These compromise the economic activity generated by visitors to the, to the area. There are businesses that may not have visitors from the festival spending money directly with them. However, they are spending it in other places and that could mean that a local accountant has more work to be done by those businesses that just brought in more money. So it trickles down to more than just our merchants and our restaurants in the area. It is known that festivals, concerts, et cetera, foster event tourism and bring revenue to the town, especially when thousands attend. This may create additional jobs because businesses with increased sales will need additional employees, more products and so on. The increased sales also mean increased tax revenue, which also helps us. There is a ripple effect in the economic benefits of successful festivals to our local economy. This creates economic impact. This is a direct consequence of hosting these events. There are many other benefits to hosting There are many other benefits to hosting events, such as increase in public finances, such as with sales tax, increase the awareness of the area, which is very important, again, to getting people to come here. It may be a starting point for community involvement and participation, volunteering, performing, et cetera. It may help create community spirit, and I'm big about promoting our town like a cheerleader, which is so important to our town. It may be morale boosting. Network info about the event becomes very important and engaging. People involved in the celebration or just talking about it and the common interest help to create and foster bonds and sense of belonging. This creates a positive social image and entertainment, creates entertainment opportunities. It may be a recruitment tool that helps someone considering moving to the area. It enhances the need for volunteerism, keeping the community actively engaged. Like a community, a nonprofit needs all of this plus funds to survive. Hosting these events is a wonderful way to raise awareness of this need and the opportunities that come with it. Lastly, I would like the community to know that the BBC encourages community growth, awareness, engagement, economic growth, positivity, forward-thinking, and unique ideas, as well as to involve as many people as possible in everything we do. Please consider participating in these events and become a BBC volunteer. I had to put that in there. Thank you.
Thank you all. That was very, that was really lovely, and it was really nice to hear your understanding and expertise about Bennington from your unique lens for each of your organizations. So I do thank you for that. Questions from the board, comments from the board? Go ahead.
My question's for Wendy, but if you all can chime in. I was, as you were talking about recruitment and the job fair that's coming next month, should people consider jobs that they may not have the entire skill set if there's training available? I guess I'm thinking, if employers are having a difficult time hiring, they may have to kind of think outside the box a little bit and provide training.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for asking that question. Hundred percent, yes. If you should, if the job interests you, you should apply for it anyway. Even if it's something that you don't quite have everything that the employer is looking for, I think it's important to apply anyway. And there are ways to address that on a cover letter, and if anybody wanted coaching on how to do that, come into the Department of Labor Office. We would be more than happy to help somebody coach on how to connect to those jobs.
I just wanted to make a comment. This is related to what Matt was speaking about. Matt, you talked about the safety of downtown, and there is a lot of organizations that are focused on that, obviously, and the pieces that you talked about, homelessness, food insecurity is one of those things, crime, all those things. But what I heard you say that made me perk up a little bit was that we have the same obligation to the public that we have to our business owners and merchants downtown. So all the effort that's being put into working for a safe community has to apply for our merchants and our downtown employees, workers, et cetera. And that sort of connects to the Community Policing Advisory Review Board. I just read some notes from them, that there are some upcoming listening sessions on the schedule, so for those people that are paying attention to those efforts, go look and see when you might be able to speak again to that organization, because I know they're interested in community feedback. And I thank you, Matt, for making that connection for me.
Yep. And I'll just add, we've seen a big increase in, I mean, we even just did a workshop. We had sold out 40 business owners coming to an emotional intelligence workshop, which was all about, how can you relate to a customer? How can you de-escalate if a customer is erratic? We wouldn't have been having that workshop five years ago. So I think it, and you're seeing the business community respond to that by showing up too, and seeing that as an engaging topic, but yeah, all those types of things, the mindfulness, the emotional intelligence, all that's important, too.
Great. Any other questions?
I'm curious as to why, when you're tracking the ages of people, you stopped, did you say at 54?
What, who are you addressing? Who are, you addressing that to Wendy?
Yeah.
Oh, as far as the, it's just, that is the definition for, it's the federal definition, governed by the, right, 64, 16 to 64.
Okay, 64.
Sorry, yes.
And is the Grow program I'm reading about, is that like the State to State program, where people are getting paid to move to Vermont to take jobs?
So the State to State program never paid anybody to move. There were two different campaigns that were launched around 2017, 2018. One, I think, paid people to move to Vermont upwards to $7,500, especially reimbursement of your moving expenses. That wasn't the program we led. We led more, come out for a weekend. We did four to six weekends a year. If you like living in Vermont for a weekend, try a lifetime. So then, we would provide concierge services for that. And to your point, Nancy, I think the governor took the program that was State to State, winded it down, and then kind of rebuilt it as the Grow program. And so there are 12 other counties that are benefiting from these funds, and those counties are administering those funds as they see fit to help people move to Vermont and also keep people in Vermont. We decided that most of those funds should go to hiring a staff person who would be a concierge service every single day. So 40 hours a week, not just on the weekend. Getting them here, helping them find everything from a carpenter to, you know, to buying a house, to getting connected to the right select board member, that sort of thing. So that was kind of the concierge service. The backend of that is some support structure for the young professional group, which we see as a main retention tool for our, definitely our younger workforce. And I always like to say, if, you know, you can buy the house, you can get the job, but if you can meet five friends in Bennington, that's what's going to keep you here most of all. So that's what we've wrapped that into. But there, no, no one's getting paid to move to Vermont. That's the short answer.
And right here in Bennington, for at least seven years, the local taxpayers were paying town officials and others to work on plans for the Tiff district. And I read the plans from day one and knew how critical that Tiff bond was going to be. For a lot of these million-dollar projects I was reading about, and also to fund the local infrastructure. Last fall, our town walked away from the Tiff. So are the groups here, in addition to our local officials, where are you going to go out and find the money to fund the public infrastructure? Because everybody knew from day one, the Bennington residents aren't going to be able to pay for this. So have any of you considered?
So the infrastructure is the responsibility of the town, and the reason that we retired the Tiff, and I will, Stu, I'll punt to you, just stop me if I start saying stuff wrong, but the reason that we retired the Tiff was because the, we had no projects within, the projects that we had within the Tiff district, we would not have used bonding for, because we had the ARPA funds. And the project outside, which is Energizer, didn't have a, we didn't have a project. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's accurate. We didn't have a project that needed the Tiff district's help.
Yeah.
And so we were on a continually reporting basis. The reporting is very complex, it takes quite a bit of time, and we just, we're not developing projects that needed the Tiff.
Yeah.
So there was no sense in maintaining it.
And so that's a slightly different issue than what they're referring to.
Okay, and one of the other plans tied to the Tiff, that it appears that some still want to push, was the plan from the start, and it was tied to the Ben High, that if that private project was done, and still privately owned, that the town taxpayers would have to pay our employees using our equipment and utilities, or the uses there, to have to pay to plow more and maintain the outside.
Nancy?
No, this is part of it, because all of the groups were.
Can you tie it into what they can refer to?
Well, sure, I just, if we're talking about economic development for Bennington, that's what I'm concerned about. No one has ever discussed this with the public. I brought it up over the past year, so I want the economic development people to say, do you think the town taxpayers should have to start taking over privately-owned parking lots and pay for them, rather than the property owners?
I think you need to be a little more specific. I think that it's unclear what you're asking.
Okay, well, you don't, nobody read about the Ben High seven years ago and followed the plans?
Nancy, Nancy, I'm unclear what you're asking.
Okay, oh, I'll try it another way.
Okay.
When the town voted a couple of years back to throw out the parking requirements, I can now put up a four or five-story building in Bennington, I don't have to provide a single parking space. Many people don't understand what these zoning changes are going to do, especially when it comes to parking. And nobody seems really concerned about Bennington, yet for a couple of years I've been reading in Manchester, their officials, their citizens, business owners have been talking about their concern about not having enough parking so that people can support businesses and restaurants. With the plans in Bennington, that we can have all these huge buildings and they don't have to provide parking, and the property owners can have their tenants and people working, taking over our public lots, I mean, where do you think customers and visitors are going to park?
Jonathan, I'm wondering if, from a regional commission, I don't know if you worked with Cat Briers on the land use development regulation.
Sure, the BCRC, they're very involved.
That's actually, I think, what she's talking about, that we can now have higher density in town, because we aren't tied to having so many parking lots?
Yeah, and that's the purpose of the strategy behind it. It's also the observation that, do we have a parking crisis in Bennington? And it's sort of, the spaces tell us whether we do or whether we don't. And that's sort of, but I think we're trying to get away from having a clear tie in terms of parking spaces that can actually become restrictive in unintended ways. And I think a lot of the work that the town has done with the BCRC over the last few years has been about removing some of the obstacles or barriers to redevelopment that might frustrate or would otherwise be an excellent project.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? All right, any questions from the community? Yes, Sam, please come up to the public microphone so you can be heard. It's an experiment. You probably have to turn it, yes.
I have no problem in projection. I know how to speak into a mic. My apologies if I'm a little loud. Sam Verschino, Bennington, Vermont. I have a lot of questions, and I'll go through them. How are we strapped for lodging? We're creating an interest to come into our town, but do we have lodging enough to fulfill people coming into our town? What about Phase Two in the Putnam Block?
Do you want us to answer each one of these separately, Sam?
It might be better just to get them all, because there may be.
Okay.
Yeah. Lodging, Phase Two.
We are being judged daily. We're being watched, and we all know that. How we conduct ourselves, what we say, what we do, everybody in the town of Bennington is a spokesperson. It can make or break this. I've said this every year. You can phrase, cophrase my saying, you've got to create a want in Vermont. And we're very lucky enough, I'm quite sure if you're familiar, with Jeff Dunham. You know, Peanut, unbeknownst to us, most of us, four years, we have the guitar guy that has come into town. So that's one good thing that has happened into this community.
Sam?
We've got a celebrity.
Questions, oh, those were it? Okay. All right, so lodging and Putnam, Phase Two, which you may or may not be.
So I'll mention some things around lodging, and maybe Jeanne, you can do it for downtown. So first and foremost, I always like to say, as the Chamber of Commerce, I myself cannot open up a lodging property, and I can't open up other restaurants, but what we can do is create the fertile ground for them to want to do that, Sam. And I think part of that is, as we show more increase, more people doing foot traffic through here, more people moving here, then the lodging happens. And I think, and I think you're right in some degree where, when we look at kind of the Manchester area, they are dense in lodging, and they have the tourist population to kind of support that. I think, you know, other than Southshire in the direct main downtown, which is limited, it's a limited, you know, inn, we have the Hampton, so, and Noddy Pine and a couple others. But yeah, I would say, as tourism increases, it would be, A, concerning if we don't have more lodging properties, but B, I also have found that if you create, you know, kind of the Field of Dreams metaphor, if you get more people here visiting, they're going to show interest, and I think Jonathan alluded to that with Chipotle and all that's going on on North Side Drive, is we have shown economic progress in the last 10 years, and we are seeing indicators that those types of organizations are moving here. Jean, I don't know if you want to add to lodging specifically?
So I get a lot of visitors, and we're really still off-season, and I always ask them if they're staying in town, and the majority are, and they don't have an issue with getting lodging. We have so many hotel and motels, that there's always somewhere they can stay, and there are several inns. So I don't, haven't seen it be a problem yet. It would be a good problem to have, because that means we would have a lot more people here.
I think the attitude should be, if we come, people will build it.
Exactly, exactly. Is that good?
Yep, thank you, thank you. Ah, and Bill Colvin is joining us. Hello.
Hi. Yeah, thanks, thanks very much. Bill Colvin, Director of the Bennington County Regional Commission. BCRC, I think, as most everybody knows, has been a supporting partner in the Putnam redevelopment projects. I'll take Sam's question regarding Phase Two. So Phase Two of the Putnam Block redevelopment continues in its feasibility and fundraising phase. The goal at this point would be to have the capital stack and those various pieces put together roughly a year from now, sometime in the summer of 2025, and then transition to construction soon thereafter. So there are some additional pieces which need to come together, particularly on the equity side. The project received a significant boost in the last five weeks with a $5 million congressionally-directed spending appropriation, thanks to Senator Welch's efforts in Washington. So that certainly helped move things forward. We're optimistic that 12 to 15 months from now, we'll have a project defined and then move to construction soon thereafter.
Thank you very much. Other questions? Yes. Oh, Scott, okay.
Scott Frost. Matt, I had just one question. Is there a factor, I've heard concerns about like the quality of that 200 or 300 group of workers? Do we have a measure of, like, people showing up on time and being good workers?
That's why I said qualified workers, when I said workers. So we were just up at a meeting at the Country Club with actually the Education Secretary, and so there was a lot of conversation about how are we taking the young population of today, not only instilling skill-based stuff, like career stuff, but also manners, for lack of a better term? And so I would say that there are some concerns about that, and especially when you look at the hospitality sector, the showing up on time with a smile and being able to offer good customer service is pretty concerning for people. And at this point, I would say, most restaurants and most hospitality people are throwing anybody into the mix, anybody they can get. And I think, so they're kind of thinking their secondary problem is the, is the people part, the smiling face and the customer service and stuff like that. Right now, they just need people to cook the pizzas and make the beds and things like that. But that absolutely has come up time and time again over the years. Yep.
Wendy, do you have, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, and if I can just add to that, as a reminder, that 200 to 300 pool of work, of available workers, it's a different pool every single day, and those individuals may be unemployed, not because they're unemployable. They're unemployed because of a variety of different things that happened. But I will say, like, we're finding at Department of Labor, a lot of folks are hitting the unemployed, that hit the unemployment system do not hit the unemployment system long. Like, they are in and they are out. And so they are getting jobs pretty quickly. I think the, you know, to your question of showing up late and having good professional work ethic, I think that can happen at any level, not just, you know, our young folks coming into the labor force, because I've, quite frankly, I've seen some really amazing young individuals that have incredible work ethic. I think that happens at, you know, all levels of the workforce, and, but I'd like to think that that is still pretty small in comparison.
Great. Maria, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, my question is.
No, you have to come up, I'm sorry. Cat TV can't film you and hear you. Cat TV can't film you and hear you if you're not at a mic, so speak directly.
My question is, does this survey, I'm not sure how it works in this town.
Please introduce yourself, Maria Corrales, Bennington, Vermont resident, voter. On the survey with the Chamber of Commerce, are that, are all business owners part of that membership? Or they have to be paid membership in that survey? Because you said 50 people.
Yep, so traditionally, it would be our membership, which is a paying membership. But we did open it up to the downtown district too, so Jeanne and I work together, so any.
Small businesses, big businesses, everyone?
Yep.
But they still have to pay?
No, we opened it to a broader base than we normally do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
I will say, it's also really hard to get business owners to fill out surveys, so 50 is pretty good.
So 50 is a very good number, yes. Any other questions?
I do.
Okay, Nancy.
Two more questions. I remember several years ago, and I think it was someone from the BCRC, said that the Putnam Block would be charging more per square foot than any other place. And we all see a lot of that retail space on Main Street sitting empty. How are you going to address that? Are you going to be able to lower what you're charging in order to get somebody in there?
That would be specifically a question. Bill, you're going to take that one?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
So obviously, between the beginning of construction and today, there was a pretty significant pandemic that impacted retail everywhere. I think the project has been impacted by that, much like downtowns, you know, throughout the country. That said, there has, there has been some additional investment in moving the remaining open spaces to a higher level of fit-up. I think one of the challenges was, there had been at least three signed leases where people came in, designed the fit-up, saw the construction price, and backed out of the lease, given the amount of work that had to be done to get it ready for their particular occupancy. So the ownership group is moving towards a higher level of finish for those spaces with the hopes that doing additional work on the front end will ease people in and making those spaces a little more ability to occupy those in the short term. That said, there also is a realization that there needs to be an adjustment in rent prices to meet the market. So that's an ongoing discussion. It's always a balancing act between what needs to happen to support the project and what is realistic in the marketplace. So those discussions happen all the time.
And also, when you were here earlier this year, Bill, doing a presentation, I think you said the plans for the Armory are complete, and I was shocked to hear that. And today, I found an article from a year ago on the banner where Mr. Cooper, you were talking, that the BCRC had done the plans for the Armory, and you worked with some type of study group to do it. Did you publicly advertise so that Bennington residents had a chance to participate and have a say?
There were, there were significant public meetings that happened throughout that study, for the Armory study. BCRC completed its work and handed that study over to the town. And I think it was where, you know, most, most everybody is familiar. There was a change in direction about what the National Guard was going to do due to some ability to recruit folks and a change in how the funding directed to the National Guard, which was going to create that domino effect to make that property available to the community. That changed, the guard pulled out, and the study's done. It will be updated at the appropriate time, should the town ever be in a position to own that building, I would assume.
But these meetings were advertised, so the people of Bennington knew?
Yes. There were significant public meetings, as there are with all of the projects that BCRC engages with.
And is, would I be able to get the minutes from somebody? And are those plans going to be going onto the town website so the public can see them?
No, because it's not a town, because as Bill just indicated, the Armory is not part of.
The Armory is no longer available to us.
Well, if it becomes.
Okay, so Nancy, please.
Well, I just want to understand, if it becomes available, who's going to get it?
So that's a, that's a conversation for a different day. Right now, we have these five individuals in front of us.
If it becomes available, it will not be coming to the town of Bennington?
We don't have.
We have no idea.
We'd have to.
We have no idea.
But if it is available, it will come to our town?
Not necessarily.
Oh.
Remember, remember, Nancy, this was to be a trade for property on Bowlin Road.
I realize that.
In exchange for the Armory. So once the Armory pulled out of that, Bowlin Road is available for the town. We continue to look for people who might use it. And the Armory is basically the property of the National Guard, and they will determine exactly how they dispose of it, should they ever dispose of it.
Do you know if they've had discussions with anyone other than our own officials?
I don't know.
Okay, and so I'm going to, let's end that conversation. Any other questions for these wonderful folks up here? Yes, please.
Hi there, Jack Ross of Vermontly, Bennington, Vermont. I just wanted to say thank you to all these folks for the work that they're doing. My window into this world is through my day job, which is working in refugee resettlement, heading up the Bennington office of ECDC. And through the resettlement process, talented people from around the world are coming to Bennington and starting their new lives in the United States, and they're coming with a wide variety of skills. So this is a group that is working hard on helping us harness those skills. Off the top of my head, I can think of over a dozen companies here in Bennington that are currently employing refugees. Regionally, refugees have added more than, these are slightly outdated numbers, but $3.5 million of taxable income to our region. And there are a lot of programs, which were sort of referenced here, that help people connect their skills to jobs in the United States. There's a lot of stories that come through refugee resettlement. Usually, I'm here talking at the beginning of the meeting in public comment, but I actually didn't do that, because in a lot of ways, resettlement was on the agenda with these folks. And the last time I was here, I was talking about a family that was reunified, and there's obviously a lot of those intense emotional human stories that come with the resettlement process. But that family's story is also a story of a man with significant background as a carpenter and construction worker with very limited English, who found a job directly related to his skill set, even without the English language component when he started it, and a woman who's now working towards starting her own food business. So there's a lot that is coming into this region through the work that our office takes the sort of initial steps with, but it's only through partnership with, you know, the Chamber, especially I'm looking at Wendy and Department of Labor, who, we have a meeting tomorrow morning to help some new folks who just arrived sign up for some of the Department of Labor services. But, you know, helping people and helping the talents and skills that are coming from around the world, helping people find that connection that keeps them here in Bennington.
Thank you, Jack.
And if I can just add to that, Jack, you're doing terrific work. And I think even through the GROW program, you're on our shortlist to connect with. So again, if people know, people that either A, want to move here or just moved here, relocate to vermont.com. So, Jack, you're on our shortlist, so we'll be in touch with you.
All right, with that, I think we're going to thank you very, very much for all the information you've shared with us tonight. I know, you want to clap. All right, next up, the Street Naming Committee report. And we have three members of that group that I guess we want to welcome, Scott Frost, Martha Mackey, and Bruce Lee Clark. And you are here to give us your report, which we did, which was in the packet, and I think should follow up with us.
Right, you've seen the report. I'm Bruce Lee Clark. I'm a Bennington resident. With me are Martha Mackey and Scott Frost. I think in that direction, yes. Yes, you've seen the report. I don't know really, I don't, I'm not going to read it. It was also very well-reported on at the Bennington Banner. We have, let me start by saying that with regard to Squaw Hill Road, there is precious little historical data about anything. And, you know, a number of not that old Bennington Banner articles back when the transfer station was being established. And so people being, talking to this board, I think. At any rate, we could find nothing that actually identifies how and where and by whom that road was named. And in talking with Joe Hall, we discovered that that whole naming process was a really informal process, particularly the further you went out from the center of town. So our, two possible replacement names for the current road are, in the order of our preference, knowing that our preference doesn't really have any say other than, because you're the folks who vote. But our preference are Jocelyn Hill Road and then Lampren Lane. The reason for the preference is that the Jocelyn family lives there currently and has lived there for a long time. And in fact, one lives where the Lamprens used to live. So that's really the reason for it. We would say that if, you know, we were talking about markers, and that whole notion about historical markers sort of came up by Rose Pelletier in the midst of the discussion. And I don't think a lot of thought was given by anybody about, okay, well, where would we put such things? And while it's really relatively easy to do that at Gypsy Lane, it seemed to us, and none of us are professionals on this, that it's, that there is not a great place for the Gypsy Road and marker, at least not a good and safe place, let's put it that way. So.
Squaw.
The Squaw Hill marker. What, did I say Gypsy? Oh, Squaw Hill. Gypsy, we have, we think there's a decent location for that. So, one, our recommendation is either Jocelyn Hill Road or Lampren Lane. They both fit your qualifications, as you gave them to us, and our preferences for Jocelyn Hill Road. The committee also requests that you consider reimbursing Jeff Jocelyn for any reasonable expenses that his business, to his business, that might arise directly from the renaming of the road. I don't know if there would be any, and wiser heads than I will discover what reasonable means in this context. I think I know what it means, but I don't get to make those decisions. Also, we would ask, we think that the job isn't done yet. Having scratched this surface, we actually think that there needs to be some more work that needs to be done in crafting the language for those QR code markers. And we are telling you that we have a willingness to work with town, that somebody in the town, perhaps in communications, I don't know, who might be willing to work with us on creating a language that you would then be able to approve. And finally, we actually like the idea of having these markers look very much like the ones that are downtown with the QR codes there. And would expect that there might be other such historical markers and opportunities for those markers going up around town as the historical import of the next few years comes around. So that's where we are. That's our report. If you have questions for us or whatever, if not, we give it to you.
Thank you. Well, I'm just wondering, do we want, do we want to take these one by one? So do we want to, we want to start with the two names that are recommended? Do we have any questions for the group? Do we have a motion that anyone would like to put on the floor? Or do we want to just have a bit of conversation?
Are any of the neighbors here from the road?
Pardon? Mr. Jocelyn came to all their meetings.
I didn't know if anybody was here that wanted to just weigh in on one name or the other, since.
Yeah, and he also was the one that requested the name.
Okay.
Where did the other name come from, just previous owners?
Yes, they were just, we were having a difficult time coming up with a second name. And they, they are previous owners who resided on the corner of what is now Houghton Lane and what is now Squaw Hill Road. And can I say that it's not even clear that the current road that we are renaming was, wasn't the original Houghton Lane. It may have been, it may have been something different. There are any number of other possibilities. His grandfather used to call it Dead Man's Curve. We're suggesting that we do not call it that.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions from the, from the public on the name? All right, do I hear a motion maybe to, to change the name of Squaw Hill to Jocelyn Hill Road?
So moved.
Second.
Great, all right. Any more discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor of changing the name of Squaw Hill Road to Jocelyn Hill Road, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. That, that part was good, yay. And, all right, so I'm thinking.
We can sit now?
You, you can't, you can sit.
It would seem to me to be.
Yeah, if you wish.
I had one comment.
Oh, sure, Scott, please.
So we did a lot of work on the history, not just fact, but legend, culture, behind the names of these roads. And I'd just like everybody to consider, the most important marker is actually the road name that will make this legend, culture, history live on. So I hope you would consider that before renaming other streets.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. All right, so as to your second request, the town reimburse Mr. Jocelyn for any reasonable expenses? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do we need to do anything about reimbursing?
That's what I'm saying right now.
Okay, and I have, I have another question. It's not related to, it doesn't need a motion. I just have a question when we're done.
About, about the reimbursement or about?
About, well, you want me to just ask it now?
Yeah, go ahead and ask it.
I just wanted to make sure that the family, is it just one family? Have they been made aware of the postal service process? That's not an issue. Not that I would vote no because of that, I just wanted to make sure that they had the information they needed.
Not an issue.
It's not an issue.
They're, they are, I think they are aware, and they've been in, Mr. Jocelyn has already been talking with the town manager.
Okay.
Which brings me to the reimbursement.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, so I think if we're all okay with it, let's just have Mr. Jocelyn work directly with the town manager on any expenses. It doesn't need to be public, it doesn't need to go through us, we just refer it to you anyway. Does that work?
And have the town manager work on the reimbursement?
Yes, just do that directly. So Mr. Jocelyn and Mr. Hurd can work together and just not need to come to the Select Board for that at all, okay. And then the third, I do understand that once you start a project, it's really, really hard to let it go. It is, it is why you see Select Board members run for additional terms. But I will say, you have completed your charge very well. So I would recommend that we turn this over to the Historic Preservation Commission, which is a standing board. It looks like you guys have already had some interaction with members of that board. The board meetings are open, and ask them to take this on. They have a staff person that is, that works with them. And they can both perhaps do some more research. It sounds like maybe on the New York State side, there might be something in the papers over there in terms of the research on, on Gypsy Lane. But they may want to do some additional research. They can also work on the wording for those markers. And I think they would very much welcome having this group, you know, go to the commission and, you know, and give them any information. We will pass on, the committee did give me all their sources of information, so Scott forwarded that, and I will make sure, Stu, that you get that so it can go to the Historic Preservation Commission. Is, does that seem a reasonable next step for everybody? Yeah.
Yeah, just so we don't make any mistakes on the wording of this beautiful plaque, should a Roma person, a Roma organization.
Historic Preservation Commission.
They could, they'll, they'll seek out input, just to make. They could, they'll, they'll seek out input, just to make sure we don't misspeak.
So what will happen is it will go to Historic Preservation Commission and they will come back to us with, for, for word.
And how, and who they spoke to and so on and so forth.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I, I share your concern.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't want to, you know, we're doing our best here and we don't want to misspeak.
Yep, yep. Okay. So does that, is there anything, does that cover, does that cover everything?
I think Historic Preservation is best qualified.
Yeah, well, and I think, because you're, you are a short, a short standing committee and, and this is one that is a longstanding committee. And it does have an opening on it right now. It's a plug for boards and commissions. So let's go with that. So thank you. This was, you guys did a lot of work in a short period of time and it feels like it's a very good outcome. And, you know, I'm happy that Mr. Jocelyn likes the change and it feels that this is a community win. So, thank you. Okay. So, moving on, I saw the chief here. Yes, we are moving into the local emergency management plan. We agreed to entertain this plan as a work in progress because we have a May 1 deadline that we're bumping up against. And so, and there's funding, this funding attached to that deadline, so we want to meet it. And so, chief, I will turn it over to you.
Excellent. Good evening, everyone. Paul Dusset, Chief of Police, Public Safety Director, Emergency Management Director and Party Planner for the Town of Bennington. I am here tonight to briefly present to you the local emergency management plan and hope for municipal adoption. The plan, as a brief overview, was sent to all select board members in their packet. I just want to address that. This plan covers Bennington and Old Bennington, does not cover North Bennington. North Bennington opts to do their own emergency management plan. So I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page. In case you're looking at this and you think that we left out North Bennington, we certainly did not. I also want to share with you that before we get into this, this is a wonderful opportunity to remind everyone here and people at home that there is a difference between emergency management and emergency preparedness. This is a great opportunity to remind everybody that you can visit the Vermont Emergency Management website and make sure that you're prepared for disaster at your own home and being prepared for up to three days is imperative. So again, I just share that with everyone in this room and everyone at home that's watching, being prepared. We have seen some pretty horrific windstorms. East Road in Bennington took a beating, lots of trees down, and fed a lot of rain, a lot of rain, which some people will tell you that we need. So again, this emergency operation plan that we have in place, or that I would hope to put in place tonight, is a living and breathing document. This, this will be changed probably, I'm going to estimate, before September of 2024 with an additional shelter. And I don't want to get into too many details on that because I don't want to let people down. But we are currently working with the SVSU. There are multiple changes being made at Mount Anthony Union High School that would benefit us with air conditioning, heat, food, and things like that. And that is going to be an option, I think, moving forward with this plan, but it is not listed in this plan because they're not ready and we're not ready. We have to come up with an agreement. So you'll note in this local emergency management plan that we've prepared here tonight, it goes down through and it lists all of the municipal emergency operations plans as far as an emergency operations center. Sometimes I do use the acronym. I will try my best not to do that. An EOC is an emergency operations center and EMD is the Emergency Management Director. The EOC is, is activated by the town manager and it's, it's listed out here, the potential EOC staff members. And the primary location for our emergency operations center is actually 118 South Street, the home of the Bennington Police Department. And our secondary location would be right here at this facility, at the firehouse. So with, with that being said, if you look through, it does list equipment that is available. It lists public information and warning. It lists vulnerable populations, vulnerable locations. And then we get to the part of shelters, which I know is something that a lot of people are interested in. The Mount Anthony Union Middle School is a regional shelter. It is not just a shelter for Bennington residents. I want to be completely clear on that. The Town of Bennington did a majority of the work to make that into a regional shelter along with our partners at Vermont Emergency Management and the American Red Cross. It is not a secret that the American Red Cross is no longer located in Bennington. If we have to contact the American Red Cross for assistance, we have to call New Hampshire and, and work from there. So in here, we list the primary, the regional shelter as Mount Anthony. The primary local shelter is, for us in Bennington, is Mount Anthony. We hope to add to that. We also have listed Second Congregational Church, eventing conversation with, with Bruce Smith. We have to be careful in the sense that we can't list certain shelters as overnight accommodations because we have to meet code. And if we don't have sprinklers and we don't have showers, you know, we, we can't list them as an overnight shelter. So you'll see in here that although the folks at Second Congregational Church are amazing, we can't just change their facility overnight and we can't use it for overnight shelter. Although the other night at the meeting, they were putting on a pretty good meal there, I have to say. I didn't get any, but that's all right. The other alternate local shelter would be Monument Elementary School for us here in Bennington. And Bennington Elks Lodge 567 has stepped up as, as a shelter location, a warming and cooling shelter, and a location where food preparation can be found. The Bennington Rural Fire Department out on Beach Street does identify as a warming and cooling shelter now as well as a food preparation. And our partners up at BPI have been on our list for a long time. They also serve as a warming and cooling shelter and food preparation. Those are the shelters that we have listed on there. I know that there is, people would like to see, this is the basic plan. This is what is required by the VCRC and it's required by Vermont Emergency Management. With our, our new partners in looking at weather readiness, we'll call it right now, they would like to see some annexes attached to this. And we are working with town staff to perhaps create some annexes and, and give a little more direction for people that don't have the ability to keep their house warm or keep their house cool. So I, I share that with you. We are also working with town staff, the manager, Mr. Hurd, brought key staff, key management team staff together last week. And we're also working on a continuity of operations plan for the Town of Bennington. Back 15 or so years ago, when I first started this, we did have what everyone calls the coop. But a lot of changes have been made and we brought the management team together so that we could in fact start identifying through individual department heads what their continuity of operation needs would be. In the event we had to relocate Public Works, we had to relocate the folks at the town office, or quite frankly, if we needed a place for the police department to move to. Obviously here, we can move our communications here to the firehouse, but we can't detain people here. So we, we do have an agreement, a verbal agreement with the Vermont State Police. I do plan to work with Sheriff Gully to make sure that his facility would be available to us in the event that we, we needed to house people that were in custody or process people in custody and our building wasn't available. So that's just a little example of, of our continuity of operations plan. And I am happy to answer anyone's questions about this local emergency management plan before you decide whether or not to adopt it.
Great, thank you. Let's start with the board. Any questions from the board on this? Looks at me. And can I ask, this was in the packet, so this was in the public packet as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure.
I apologize, I should have mentioned that.
Well, you, you said it was in our packet and I realize that that doesn't always mean that it's in the public packet. You have questions?
Yeah, just a few.
Go ahead.
Just a few. So you mentioned that North Bennington has their own emergency plan. Does our police department though have to implement their plan in the, in the event that they needed police officers?
Yes.
So I'm assuming you have their plan?
So currently, the Village of North Bennington, through their trustees, are currently working on their plan. And Mr. Hurd and I and Ms. Jenkins have participated in one meeting with them as they tried to regroup in North Bennington and redevelop their plan as well.
Great, okay. As far as vulnerable locations, and I know nothing about this, I'm just throwing it out there, should our water facilities be included, like the wastewater treatment plant and the filtration plant on Route 9?
That's a wonderful question.
Wow, I don't normally get that comment.
With, with that being said, our, our wastewater facility and our water facility must be occupied and maintained no matter what. They have what they need at both of those facilities so that their staff can stay there overnight. There is no relocation for them, so I did not list them on here. They, they may be vulnerable, but they must stay up and running. And so I did not list them because there's a plan in place in the event, I mean, think about Irene and how much time our water department crew spent up on the Woodford Road at that facility and wastewater as well. So I didn't list them because they have, actually have their plan in place where that will be staffed.
Okay. Um, let's see. Oh, the regional shelter, which is Mount Anthony Union Middle School, what's the region? What's, what defined region?
Bennington County.
The county, okay. That's all I have. That was easy.
Excellent. Nicely done.
Yeah. I have a couple of questions. I, so this one looks very, very similar to last year's. The, the major change I see is that, you know, we aren't, we aren't considering shelters that couldn't be overnight, as overnight. But I do have a question about what it means, warming and cooling. Are we saying that these can be our warming and cooling shelters?
Yes.
So if we have very cold, if we have very cold weather?
Yeah, so if we, if we had a very cold event during the day, this, some of these shelters could be opened as a place for people to go and get warm, receive hand warmers, receive additional clothing if needed, and, and things of that nature. Again, they're, they're just not overnight shelters.
And they, they've agreed to this. Do we know the hours that they're willing to, and days, that they're willing to have people there?
Back in March, in preparation for this, I sent letters to individuals with self-addressed stamped envelopes for return. These are, these are the locations that actually got back to me. I think we lost some envelopes and some stamps along the way because only about 50% of the letters that I sent were responded to. So these, these, I don't have hours. That's something that I, I realized when, when I was putting this together. And what we, what we look at is as long as we have good contact information and a way to get ahold of people. Like, I'll give you a great example. At Second Congregational Church, Bruce Smith was great when I spoke to him. And of course, you know, my, my kid skied for him, so we have that relationship. So, but he was great and, and answered, answered my questions. I answered his questions. That's just one location. You know, when I, when I have spoken to Donna Colley in the past up at Monument, of course, you know, their maintenance staff would be the first ones to get the call. And when you look at, before anyone asks, when you look at some of these things, you know, we, we also have to consider, is school in session?
So I, so I guess the, the reason I was asking that is that I think, I mean, our follow-up work, which hopefully VCRC is going to convene us as a larger group, because I don't want just your name on, on the front saying that you're the only person that, that put this together, because this is a community emergency management plan. You're our leader, but, you know, but I think more heads are always better. I, I think under the notes, it would be good to know the hours and also what this means then is that potentially we have in-town daytime warming and cooling shelters that what we don't have is the overnight sprinkled generator kitchen. It doesn't even have to have kitchen, right? It just has to be sprinkled.
We have, we have to have showers and we have to have.
Showers and toilets.
And I do believe that we have to have the ability to house domestic animals such as dogs and cats.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
You know, we, we have that at Mount Anthony Union Middle School. We would have that at the high school. But you'll, you'll see on here, some facilities opt not to allow pets.
I get that, but I let, we're also distinguishing between an emergency where a dam breaks or we have an explosion that we have, you know, we have to have a regional evacuation from warming and cooling shelters. So they're two sort of different kinds of things. But on the warming and cooling, it would be great to have the hours so we can figure out, yeah, what we need and.
I did, I did make note of that.
Yeah, and, yeah, it's good to know whether they can bring their pets or not. So that's, that's super because that feels like that's some, that's some progress already. On the vulnerable populations, during that training, and maybe these were side conversations rather than sort of, we're all taking notes, but it felt like we were, we came up with some other categories that were sort of obvious ones like VNA and hospice, GBIcs, social service organizations, UCS, that we would want to have as, as organizations that we contact if something happens. And that's, you know, that seems to be along the lines of the ones you have listed as vulnerable populations now. But I'm thinking we could add those before we finalize this because we do have till May 1st to do that. So let's, let's add those. And then under the contact information, some people, we have full names and we have their cell phones, and I'm assuming those are their work cell phones. But for a lot of people, we have the, we have the receptionist. And for places like CLR or UCS or, well, Fillmore Pond, any of these places that don't have receptionists at the desk at night, what you get is an answering machine. So I'm wondering if we can go through and get the full name of the individual that actually should be the emergency contact and their cell, and their work cellphone. And, and double check because some of these numbers aren't, I think aren't in, aren't working. But, but that feels like that's something we could update so that we have that going, you know, into, into the next year. And that, that feels like that would, you know, that would put us a lot further ahead. Does that feel like something we can do in the next, in the next week?
I can't, I can't tell you I can do that in the next week. I've got a lot going on. I understand what you're saying, but some of the, some of the facilities that you've mentioned have their own emergency operation plans and are required to have those emergency operation plans. We have at the Bennington Police Department, we have a, what we call a names table that has different organizations listed and we have what we call key holders, people that we can call. And I just, I mean, I think to, and I'm not, I'm just trying to explain to you that to list everybody by name and their cellphone number, a lot of that information we do have at the office. But to put this out, I mean, I'm willing to sit down and discuss this with you at our regional, at our regional meeting.
Is this because it's a public document?
There is information that's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is information that is not complete in here because we redacted cellphone numbers for people because this is a public document. numbers for people, because this is a public document. And, you know, I'm just speaking for myself, I don't want everyone in Bennington County to have my emergency phone number, you know, on this form.
Yeah, let's see if we, let's see if we can do that really soon, because I think this is, yeah, these numbers don't help. And so if this is, if this is an emergency document, if, you know, if you're not, if you're not around and...
Well, I'm given a role to play, as Dr. Bennington, my president, I won't be able to...
Right, so let's figure out how to do that, because it really should be people's work cell phones and their complete names on that, okay? So let's figure out how to do that, before, before May 1st, if we can. Okay, I think those, those were my questions. Questions from the public?
I actually have a question, too.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I attended that, and I think there were just a few of us that attended that initial meeting, maybe it was the one before, but just kind of talking about the vulnerable populations, sorry, I kind of rehashed that again. The Citizens Assistance Registration for Emergencies, vulnerable populations, I'm just kind of considering people on oxygen that are not at Crescent Manor or Health and Rehab, is that care, is that somebody, is that what people register for?
Yeah, so you can register with the state, and Bennington Rescue also has a list of vulnerable people that are not in nursing homes or care facilities.
Okay.
And so we don't maintain that list at the police department, but Bennington Rescue has the list and the state has the list. You have to be willing to do that, and you have to be willing to give up your information for that.
Right, and like you mentioned, those are very, very, those are lists, they're very private, and people don't have the information that can be spread around, and I've appreciated that, because, you know, it's like, oh, I know this person doesn't want their information to go anyplace else. So they would call Rescue Squad or the state to do that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Tom?
Yeah, I just, thank you, Sarah, I had pretty much the same question about the care program, so we don't have to do that again. I had a question under vulnerable populations, I just wanted to ensure that there is an organization that would be able to help with outreach to our unhoused citizens in the event of these emergencies, and I just don't see anyone on here that would fall into that category.
Yeah, I think it's, I think we need to expand this list, and if there's some redundancy, then so be it.
So I, you know, I'll share with you that next week, ICS 402 training will be here at the firehouse. There's, there's two different four-hour trainings, it's the same training. I would certainly suggest that all of you attend and receive that training. Sarah, you were there, Jeanne, you were there, we offered up this facility so that we could bring training here. Dara Zink, who helps us out with, with all of this, has been great in trying to bring training here, it's finally happening. And I would also suggest that you all as select board members or people from this community, attend the regional emergency preparedness meetings. The next one's up in Manchester, Dara Zink at the BCRC would be more than happy to share that information, the information went out today. I don't remember the date right now off the top of my head, because I don't have my email in front of me, but, you know, there's, there's a lot for everyone here to learn about, about planning and about being prepared for emergencies. So I'm hoping that we as a group take this on and we take it seriously, and, and we can all participate in the trainings. I'm not, I'm not perfect by any stretch of the imagination, but we've, we've had a lot of training, we've brought a lot of training to the town of Bennington, and the select board in the past has not really participated in that training. So I'm glad that we're having this conversation, and I hope that we all take advantage of the trainings and we can work collectively on this.
Can you tell us the times for the training?
Yeah, I'll send it to you in email and then you can send it to the board, how's that? I have it, I have it, you know, in my email at the office. I would, you know, again, there's, actually, I think I can, it's 11 to 3, then there's a break, and then it goes 4 to 8, and it's next Monday.
Next, what day is Monday?
Next Monday.
Would it be beneficial to only go, I have a job until, I could get to the later session, would it be beneficial?
That's why we did it, that's why we...
Oh, it's the same thing?
It's the same training, and that's why I asked for this, because they were only going to come down from 11 to 3.
Thank you.
But that doesn't behoove people that are employed during the day.
What was the May?
It's next Monday, 29th.
Yep, all right, so, yes, Nancy.
Stu, at a meeting last year, you said the Ben Hi would be an emergency shelter, but nobody's ever publicly discussed that, is the Ben Hi going to tie into this some way? Into these emergency plans?
That was never, and Ben Hi isn't in construction, so that's...
Yeah, it wouldn't be considered this year, anyway. It may be in the future.
This is a yearly...
I thought you were talking, you said, if the project gets done, that's going to be an emergency shelter.
I don't believe I said that.
I just, Nancy, if I may, this is why, like, we have to have everything in place, like with the high school.
Yeah.
I love it, like, I've been over with, with Mr. Payne and the staff over there, they were very welcoming, and we're hoping that that will be able to be added to, to our, our shelter plan here in Bennington, and for a lot of different reasons. But the ability for them to be able to produce air conditioning in the cafeteria, in the gymnasium, and, and that other location there, the auditorium, excuse me, the auditorium, that's extremely beneficial to us. And, you know, being able to have the generator and empower that facility and things like that, because that would give us a shelter, what I would call north and south, north of the river, south of the river, because there are some people from Shasbury and Arlington and things like that, that, you know, may not be able to get all the way down to Bennington and get across the river, they can go to the middle school, then we've got other people. It just depends on, on how you look at this, and we also know that we would like to develop a third, larger facility, just because the high school's a little bit close to the river and if it's rain, what have you. But, you know, it's, it's in the works, you know, we've opened up Mount Anthony Union Middle School, I believe, a total of three times in 15 years I've been doing this, and, you know, but we need to be prepared and we need to be able to manage. So I think as facilities are, as facilities are under construction, if they, if they become available, we can certainly add that, but, you know, I, I think we're a little ways away from that, and that's why the high school is not listed on here, because I think it's probably going to be September-ish before all of the projects get done at the high school and we can say where they are for them. That's just an example.
Any other questions? Oh, sorry.
I just remember during Irene, wasn't there an issue with some of the people in Bennington being able to get up to the, the middle school on the east road because the bridges were closed?
Right, that's correct, they had, they had to go out and around. Silk Road Bridge and bridges like that, you know, we had closed temporarily, but the, like, the one on Park Street, that was closed, we had to close on, on Upper County Street by North Branch Street, we were concerned about that, but the Public Works Department did an amazing job holding that together. So temporarily, yes, there were some issues with people getting to the middle school.
Any other questions from the board?
Sure, turning point would be added to this list.
Yes, that's what I'm talking, yes, turning point, yes. Yes. Any questions from the public? Boy, Martha, please, come on up. All right, we have a foursome, all right.
Martha Mackey, Martha Mackey, Bennington, Vermont. I'm the community organizer with Vermont Interfaith Action for Southwestern Vermont. I'm here with some members of a group that I've been working with, looking at this issue of emergency preparedness. We have agreed to cede our time to Jack so he can make a slightly longer statement on our behalf.
Thank you, Martha, Jack Rossermanly, Bennington, Vermont.
You're going to have to speak directly into it.
Hello, Jack Rossermanly, Bennington, Vermont, ready to be heard by all, including Cat TV, hopefully. It was very nice to hear the chief reference some of the new partners who are involved, because I believe that was a reference to our group, and we were very happy to see our group's research report included, along with the revised management plan in the select board packet tonight. So as I said, I'm Jack Rossermanly of Bennington, Vermont, I'm also a member of Bennington Organizing in Action, which is the local chapter of Vermont Interfaith Action. We represent five local faith communities comprising more than 250 citizens of Bennington. For the last 10 months, members of this group have been doing extensive research into Bennington's emergency management plan, and also into, the chief was good enough to reference sort of individual preparedness, but we were also looking into community preparedness, especially for extreme weather events and severe weather. So that research led us to the creation of the report that was included in the public and in the select board packets, and actually, there's some copies available in the back of the room specifically of our report, if anyone's interested. Our group also held an action last Sunday, which was attended by over 60 community members, and also several of our elected officials and the chief himself, so we're very happy that Tom Haley was able to attend, we were very happy to see the chief there, and though Chairperson Jenkins was not able to attend, she did send some written responses to a few of the questions that we asked, so we definitely want to extend our gratitude to those folks. And for anyone interested, you can watch the full recording of that action, it's almost exactly an hour long, because we stayed right on time, and it's available on the Cat TV YouTube channel. These are some of the questions that we asked to town officials, and they were asked to respond yes or no, and these are the responses that were given. Do you commit to revising the management, the local emergency management plan in the following ways? One, to include activation during extreme heat and cold, anytime extreme weather conditions as specified by the state are met; to support the creation of a detailed plan of operation in writing, including creating annexes to the current plan specifically for extreme heat and cold; and to include the elderly medically compromised and unhoused on the vulnerable population list in the plan. And all three of our participating officials very happily responded yes to all of those. The second was, do you commit to identifying and detailing in the emergency management plan a shelter location for 12 to 15 people in downtown Bennington for daytime or overnight stay according to weather conditions, including providing COTS food and support staff? And that was sort of a mix of yes and no from the various folks, and as we heard tonight, the chief also mentioned that the high school is being upgraded with air conditioning and other equipment so that it can be a shelter similar to how the middle school currently functions. And one of the responses given by Chairperson Jenkins was, we can certainly assist in the identification of a lead partner for an extreme weather shelter and in identifying funding sources to bring a shelter space up to code. As the recent motel exit emergency plan from the governor's office illustrated, we do not currently have a ready space to support individuals for short-term shelter. The space must meet health and safety codes, we will all need to work together to figure this out. Very true. Our third question was, do you commit to identifying and training a second-in-command for the emergency management response? And all three officials responded yes. Do you commit to working with the state to establish a local volunteer medical corps in Bennington? Everyone responded yes to that question, and the chief did mention a concern, which is, are there enough willing and able-bodied individuals available to volunteer? So we will have to do a little bit of outreach, but I'm sure there's a lot of, a lot of folks out there who would be ready to step up. And our last question was, do you commit to meeting with leaders from our organizing group six months from now to give us a progress report on these commitments that you made tonight? And that was not meant to be an exclusive statement, saying that only our group would be met with, but just as the, as a group that has taken a particular interest and asked some specific questions, would officials be willing to meet with us? And the answers were sort of yes and no, because they wanted to clarify that there would still be broader community involvement, and we're happy to confirm that's what we're interested in as well. Part of what Chairperson Jenkins said was to be successful, this has to be a community-wide discussion, I think that in six months' time, we should assess our progress as a full community. All of these questions and our requested revisions to the emergency management plan stem from our understanding of severe weather as a threat to public health and safety. With this in mind, it's essential that a revised emergency management plan includes specific provisions for how it can be put into operation on a smaller scale to provide safety for those whose lives are endangered by severe heat and cold. The emergency management plan version provided in this packet does not currently include some of these requested and agreed-upon revisions, and so we're asking the select board to postpone approving this draft and hold an emergency meeting before the end of the month, in which time as many revisions as possible could be made to the plan, some of which are additional revisions identified during the conversation tonight about contact information. Additional revisions, such as the identification of a downtown shelter, will likely require more time, but should be done in a timely manner as well.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, Sam.
Sam Rusino, Bennington, Vermont, some concerns on this emergency management plan. What about amateur radio operators? That should be your vocal point. Huh? Are we going to have drills? I mean, with Irene, there was a lot of confusion on social media, where to get accurate information, that was another concern. We don't have a siren anymore. In the event of notifying the public, what are you going to do, go through the public address system throughout the streets of Bennington, letting people know that we've got a natural disaster on our hands of what possibly could happen? Solar arrays are none of the vulnerable situation for vulnerable locations, also cell towers as well. If we don't have cell towers, we're not going to have cell service. What about the Civil Air Patrol? They've been very vocal, growing leaps and bounds, we've got an airport, eyes in disguise would be a part of that as well. I guess that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you. There is, I think it is worth looking at number four, which is public information and warning, and it looks like there's a nice mix of various ways that people can be, people will be notified if they're not called directly, but I think that's another thing to look at.
I think, too, before we move away from that, you know, you can go to the, again, the Vermont Emergency Management website and sign up for VT Alert. You know, complete nonsense, hearing about the horn or the siren, that's old school, that was 35 years ago, it's not realistic, and, you know, silly comment, Vermont Alert is the way to go, and, and I think that we, we need to move forward and we need to, to move forward with this tonight. And then, as we talked about, in six months, get back together and, and see how far we have progressed. I have two things, Ms. Jenkins, I'd like to add.
Okay.
I did speak at their meeting, it was, it was attended by people from all over, not just Bennington, and the Medical Reserve Corps is the responsibility of the Vermont Department of Health. I did say yes to working with this group so that we could work with the Vermont Department of Health. What Jack was talking about when I said that we needed volunteers is just that, a medical reserve corps is made up of volunteers, there's quite a bit of training. When I was at that meeting, I talked about the age of the people in the room, and it wasn't meant to be funny, it was, we're definitely lacking volunteers. The Red Cross is also in need of volunteers, and we would rely heavily on the Red Cross if, if something were to happen. You know, we rely on our fire departments in this region very heavily for all sorts of things. We cannot rely on our firemen to be volunteers at the shelters as well. The police have things to do, Bennington Rescue will be running around, they're short-staffed, just like the police. So as far as the Medical Reserve Corps piece goes, I would like to just address that we, I am committed to trying to work with the Vermont Department of Health to, to bring back the Medical Reserve Corps. There was a trailer down at one time at Bennington Rescue, I don't know what they have for volunteers. We can certainly work on that. I want to reiterate that the Red Cross is looking for volunteers, it's easy to come to a meeting and, and state all of the things that we need, but we need other people to step up and make this happen. And I, I share that with you, because I share the frustrations of the group, that we don't have everything that it seems like we need, but again, the town of Bennington can't be responsible for, for making sure that there's a shelter in downtown Bennington only when we have outlying areas that are inaccessible if we have a water event. So there's definitely a lot of work that needs to be done. If, if, if we're going to have a 100% perfect plan, we also need to work with communities in the surrounding area to include... the surrounding area to include Shasbury and Arlington and Powell, who all rely on services from Bennington. So their leaders need to be involved as we progress through this, and we talk about regional emergency planning. I don't think that the burden should be placed on the taxpayers of Bennington to develop regional operations. And again, I am happy to work with Jack and his group, or I'm sorry, Martha and her group. I already offended Martha once. I apologize for that at the first meeting when I said there was not a lot of young people in the room and Martha sat me straight on that. So, and I was wrong when I looked at Martha. So I, and the new Reverend too, at the St. Peters, he's pretty cool too. He emailed me after the meeting, so I like him. But the bottom line is, is that there's a lot of work that has to be done, not just in Bennington. It's regional. And again, we can't just rely on our fire departments. These guys and girls are amazing already. And, you know, we need to bring in the sheriff, we need to bring in the lieutenant from the Shasbury barracks, and we need to reach as far as Win Hall and Manchester as well to make sure that we're ready. And those other towns on the other side of the mountain that I guess are in Bennington County that we never hear from. But again, it's a lot of work for the group. It's a group effort. It's not a Paul Dussette effort. It's not just a Bennington Select Board effort. It's not just their group. You know, it's a huge group and everybody needs to lend a hand.
Yep. All right. So I think that brings us full circle. We're entertaining this tonight because there is a May, to get full funding in case of an emergency, we need to have filed this plan by May 1. I do think there are some things that we can do before that time. And so I think we'll see how, we'll see how we can proceed with that because we need to make a motion tonight. But, you know, it sounds like the biggest four areas are looking for additional overnight shelter space, which we're on. Looking at how we revitalize the medical, the volunteer medical corps. And there are at least two people that were called up by the governor that are in town and a third person that we've been approached about joining. So I don't know, I don't know what a quorum is for that group, but do you have any idea how many people are you?
I reached out to Bill Carmotta at the Bennington Rescue Squad, and he doesn't have the information that I'm looking for on that group, but it's a lot more than...
The governor does. Amazing. I know, amazing.
I have no comment on that because, once again, we get direction, unfunded direction from the state of Vermont. Unfunded.
Yep.
Just remember that.
Yep.
But I think that you're tracking in the right direction in the sense that it's going to involve the Vermont Department of Health, as I said, and anyone that's watching at home, or Mr. Therrien, if you want to write about this in the banner, you know, you need to take a look at what the training requirements are to be part of the Medical Reserve Corps.
Right.
It's not as simple as signing up.
Okay.
So I think those items that you're talking about, you know, as Jack and Martha and others have talked about, you know, we're going to need that six months to work on this and see what it takes to bring that Medical Reserve Corps back to life. Because right now, it's flatlined.
I think, stop worrying about the six months right now. Don't worry about that.
Okay.
All right. So those two things, then we also need to, I think the things that we can do pretty immediately is clean up, at least get a better initial vulnerable list of vulnerable populations to put on here. And I think there were a lot of suggestions that were made, and we will want to further flesh that out probably, but there are additions and we need people's names and making sure that we actually have the right people and that the numbers actually, the number that we have actually works. So I think that feels like that is something we can do. You know, we do know how to, we do know how to add at least the organizations, and then we can figure out what we do about putting people's personal information in here. That feels like that's two separate issues, but sort of, there's some very obvious additions that have been mentioned tonight that I think we can add in there. And then the longer-term, you know, warming and cooling shelter situation, making sure that we know for the ones that have said that they are willing to be warming and cooling shelters for daytime use, what those hours, what those times are, what days and what hours, so that we have that information going, you know, going into this. And then, quite honestly, I don't, it doesn't, I think, given the amount of work that's been done and the amount of interest, and I'm just thinking back to the training, the variety of people that came to that local emergency management plan training, it makes sense to continue this work, like, in a larger group. Dara is willing to bring us together. She's, that's a service she offers. Tom and I have been involved in this work, so I, you know, I would suggest that Tom and I represent the select board. If there's a third person, I think let us know after the meeting. We can have up to three people. But I think rather than have you work on this independently for six months and come back, I think it makes much more sense to have a meeting, figure out what it is that we can take on. You don't need to do all this work.
No, I understand that, but I think there needs to be a clear edification on, you know, why we're adding certain groups. You know, and, I mean, I think GBIX does great work in Bennington, but, you know, when you start talking about the Vermont Emergency Management, or the local emergency management plan, you know, I need to know what services we're going to have to provide to that vulnerable population. As I said earlier, there's a lot of groups that should have their own emergency action plans on file, you know, at their facilities.
They will, but this is, this is the, I would say, virtually every organization on here has their own plan. This is the list to call to say, there's an emergency. Yep, because United Counseling Services has a plan in case of an emergency.
That's correct.
We're not calling them because they don't have a plan. We're calling them because there's an emergency, right?
Right. But I also add, again, Vermont Alert. I mean, if you're the director of an organization, you should be signed up for Vermont Alert at minimum.
Okay. So every, and probably every organization on here is, but...
I don't know that.
But if we're making this list, then let's make it, let's make it cover all the vulnerable populations that we're aware of. I mean, when the motel voucher program was going to end, we reached out as a town, we reached out to GBIX, we reached out to Turning Point, we reached out to, I'm trying to think who, I think there were four or five organizations that felt like they might see vulnerable populations moving in their direction.
Easy age.
Yes, yes, homeless shelter, yes, thank you. Yeah, so, and so I think there are some very obvious organizations that should be on this, on this list. And, you know, and maybe we have a meeting, you know, this week to finalize that, but it feels to me like before, I think we should approve this tonight, but I think we should also move forward with some next steps that, you know, that make sure that...
May I?
We're doing this.
I think that's great. I think we need to approve this and let the chief get back to his work. We have a training on Monday and let this be a living document. So, like you said, you know, I think those are great steps. And let's approve this and get next to our next agenda item.
Can we have a document after we approve it?
Yes. So this is a living document, but, but what it has to have is our real signature on it, on the signature line, and it has to have the date that's adopted. And if it's updated, then it needs to come back to us.
So we can approve it tonight?
We can approve it tonight. We can, exactly.
Those next, like, it was mentioned.
But I think I want to make sure that we're not going to be waiting six months before...
You're making sure we don't get complacent about the updates that are...
Yes, exactly. 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 So, so I would love for our next step to be that within the next two months, Dara pulls us together. There is a regional meeting, there is a regional group, so this is the Bennington plan, this isn't the Shasbury plan. There is a regional plan that connects everybody in. But I think, you know, so, you know, I think this doesn't, Paul, this should not be on your shoulders.
No, I mean, I think there's a great town staff that's going to help with this.
Yep.
But it's going to take time. I mean, this is just, you know, this is just one more thing.
It is, but Paul, it also isn't yours to think through by yourself. And I think that's the other piece that I really want to make sure that you don't leave thinking that this is all, that we're saying, okay, we want this changed and this changed and this changed, and you're the only person that can do that.
Well, like I said, there's a great town staff. They'll come together, we'll try to make some changes and come back in two months.
So can you commit to, within the next two months, we have a, we have a larger group meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I'll email, I'll email Dara tomorrow and just ask what her schedule looks like, and we're not waiting two months. I mean, I'm thinking that in the next few weeks, we'll pull something together.
Okay. Well, yeah, okay. That sounds good. All right. So with the understanding that there will be a larger group that works with BRCRC over the next couple of months, and there will be some kind of general notice so that people know when that meeting is held?
Sure.
Okay.
Can I just repeat the four areas of most concern?
Yep.
Additional shelters, medical corps, contact names among vulnerable population, and then additional organizations. Were those the four?
The four, well, there's additional overnight shelter capacity for emergency, and then there's warming and cooling shelter capacity.
That's two items, okay.
Yeah, they're separate.
And there were also the annexes that...
Well, those are the annexes. So an annex is like an appendix, yeah? It's sort of a, or it's extra.
It would be, it would be placed in the back of the binder for whatever reason.
So the annex is sort of, yeah, all these things.
So we need warming and cooling candles?
Yeah, we do. All right. So with all of that, someone want to make a motion to approve this plan and with the understanding that it is a living document that will be improved?
I will make the motion to accept this document, understanding it's a living document. It makes me nervous because the date is May 1st to receive that funding, but I will make that motion.
The...
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Yeah. I mean, all that the date means is that if you get involved, and if there is an emergency, then full fund.
That's my motion.
And if that passes tonight, it will go in as is, and funding, we will be approved for funding.
For full funding, yes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any more discussion?
I just want to make sure, as this goes forward and changes are made, the public is going to be able to weigh in, weigh in on this too?
We have to, we have to approve. If we update it, then we're supposed to approve the amended version. So yes, so it will come to us again.
What we're doing right now, there really isn't anything new in place that we haven't had in the past, if there are going to be new things in the future.
Any amendment will come to us, yes.
And the public will be able to weigh in on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right. The ayes have it. Thank you, chief.
You're welcome. Good night, guys. Good night.
All right. Communication policy, second reading. Jonah.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jonah Spivak, Communications Coordinator for the town of Bennington. I have the updated version of the communications policy to present tonight, and I'm going to very briefly go through the changes that were made based on the public comment and the comment from the select board at our last meeting. Under social media, paragraph B, we added the words "or any of its departments," so it now reads, "No new social media accounts representing the town of Bennington or any of its departments may be created without the permission of the town manager." In that same section, we added paragraph D, which reads, "The Bennington Police Department and the Bennington Fire Department maintain Facebook pages for the purpose of sharing information to the public specific to their roles as police and fire departments, and shall follow the same policies and procedures as the town of Bennington at a minimum. Those policies may be strengthened to be in line with police or fire department policies." Then down in paragraph H, I added a link for our public notices section on the town website, because that is another place where we share social media content. On paragraph M, I added the word business after the word municipal, so, and I'm just going to read the first sentence, so it now reads, "All posts by members of the municipality's public bodies that relate to municipal business are subject to the open meeting law." And then finally, under section five, emergency communications, paragraph C, we spelled out partners that we would reach out to, so that paragraph now reads, "The town may reach out to community partners such as the Southwestern Vermont Supervisory Union, SVSU, and other partners or media outlets such as Cat TV, The Banner, WBTN AM, and other local media and radio stations to help amplify and broaden the reach of emergency information." And that was it for the changes and updates based on those comments.
This is a dumb question. Is it southwest Vermont or southwestern Vermont?
I think it's southwest.
Southwest Vermont, okay.
Okay, I'm making that change right now as we speak.
Okay.
That's not a dumb question at all.
Well, I should know. I should know. I don't know. Okay, any questions? Nancy?
On the town Facebook page, and I've had a couple of people ask me about this. Are citizens able to ask questions about what's posted and to get an answer? Can they make comments about a project or program, why they support it or not?
Anyone is allowed to make any comment they want on our Facebook page. We do not ban anyone from participating in that forum. What we do do is filter all comments equally with the goal that they're all filtered. And what that means, according to Facebook, is that you, as the poster, and any of your friends will see your posts, but it is not out there for everyone to see unless they're a friend of yours. So one thing that I do when I can is I do look at comments that are out there, and occasionally if someone asks a clarifying question, or there's information, like for example, when there was a post about affordable housing and someone wondered what affordable housing bans look like, in other words, what are the different amounts of money you can make to be eligible for a program? I then edited and updated that post to reflect that new information. And on occasion, I have reached out to people that have asked questions as well.
Are we allowed as a town to have the comments unfiltered so that everybody can see them as long as they're appropriate, where no one would be swearing or acting inappropriately online?
So is the question, are we allowed to have them unfiltered?
Yeah.
You could, but there's two things that could happen. Number one is that you, especially if I or another town person were to respond on that forum, we have then created a public record that we would be required to keep in perpetuity, and that is quite expensive. Last time I was solicited for that service was over a year ago, and it was between $600 or $700 a month for that service to provide that archival level. I feel there was something else I was going to mention, but it escapes me at the moment. Pardon? Oh, oh. And just the time to moderate and respond to every comment would be absolutely huge. What we do do is direct people in our information about the page on the different ways they can reach out to the town to get their questions answered.
And what about if, just while the town office was open, you could shut down the commenting, the commenting when you weren't there? Couldn't you let comments be posted about projects and programs that everybody could see without you responding?
I guess I'm not sure I understand, but to be clear, everybody can post whatever they want currently.
But you said then you filter it, so only a certain group will see those posts.
Nancy, that's not true. These are Facebook requirements that he's talking about.
I'm just asking. I don't know any of this. I'm not on social media.
No, I'm happy to answer. I'm just making sure.
So it's not something that our town is doing? I mean, that the town office is doing? If Sam posted a question, a comment about a project, I support this because I think A, B, C, and D.
Yep, he can certainly do that.
And everybody who goes to the page will see it.
No, as I said, every, every post is filtered equally, so that with the goal that the person, the poster, and all their friends will be able to see the comments, but it's not a wider conversation beyond that.
And that's a Facebook filtering.
Okay, so...
It uses Facebook filtering to accomplish that.
So no town is allowed to let all the public see the comments?
Could you repeat the question?
So what that means is, I'm not on social media, but if I wanted to read Sam's comments, I could be a Facebook friend of Sam's.
You have to be a Facebook friend of Sam's to read his posts. That's how social, that's how Facebook works.
For everybody.
I think Jonah's explanation was really, could you explain that again? Like, you explained it very well last night.
Okay, well, just a minute ago, you mean?
No, last meeting, sorry. I was watching the last meeting. Your last meeting, you explained it very well, and I watched the last meeting.
I'll, I'll give you an example. I can get on Bennington Blotter sometimes, and I can see where everybody can be having a conversation, and I think I'm reading everybody's comments.
That's, that's correct. That's up to the, the different Facebook pages to set that level of filtering or not have it at all.
So we're choosing not to do that?
That is what we're suggesting in this policy, and it's for those two reasons that I mentioned. Number one, creating a public record inadvertently that we then have to preserve forever. And by the way, well, and then number two, just the amount of staff time that would be required to monitor every comment that's made would be, would be vast. And I can assure you, and actually I'd invite you, if you would like, come to my office. I'd be happy to let you look at the kind of, kind of comments we receive. And if the concern is that we're not providing a public forum for people to share their opinions, I don't think you have much to worry about, and I'd be happy to look at them with you to, so you can get a sense of that, and that there are many other forums where people can provide that unfiltered commenting as you talk about. But I would also dare say that the purpose of the town's Facebook page is for the town to express what's going on to the community. And we want it to be something of a safe place for all community members to be able to feel welcome going and getting that information. And I dare say that sometimes, public comment in unrestricted and unmoderated fashion is not always that welcoming.
Okay, and are you, are you the only one who posts on the Facebook page?
Uh, I am the primary poster, and this would enshrine, one of the things that this policy does is really specify who would have that ability. Currently, the community development director also can post, and, and usually typically sharing items, for example, from the recreation center. There are some other people that also need to post, for example, in our public works department, when we have items about road closures or interruptions in water supply or things like that, there's a staff person there as well that can make those posts.
And is there one person who has to see everything before it goes on, or there's four or five people right now that can post on it?
There, there's a number of people that can post on there now, currently.
Okay, and last, I just realized a few days ago, there isn't anything on here about town surveys.
On Facebook?
On this policy, correct?
What it does is it says that, in the case that we're soliciting public opinion, we will direct them to a site where they can do that. And that was specifically with, for, things like the town survey in mind. So for example, what we'll do on Facebook is let people know about the survey and provide a link to the website where they can participate.
Okay, I think we should have something on there, that it should be limited to Bennington residents, because people who don't live in Bennington, they may shop or work here, they don't help to fund the town budget.
Surveys should be limited to Bennington residents? I apologize, I cut you off. I just wanted, is that what you said?
I, I think if we're going to be using this to direct people to the town survey, we should make it clear it's limited to Bennington residents, because non-residents aren't helping to fund our town budget unless they own a property or business in Bennington. And I don't think people from other towns should be telling us in Bennington how they want us to spend our budget.
Uh, so a couple of things about that. One is, we do ask a question in the survey that helps us identify where people are coming from who are taking that survey, and 95% of the people who took the survey were from Bennington. And whenever I mentioned the fact that, when I mentioned the fact that one out of 18 people in the community answered the survey, I factored out that 5% that was not from Bennington. But I also would remind you that there are certain people that work in town or own property in town, that even though they're a taxpayer, they may, they may not technically be a resident. And likewise, it is still useful for the survey, especially when they know where they are, because it is valuable to be able to see where this information is coming from. But knowing what other people think about our community, especially people that work here, could be valuable as well. But again, to answer your point, we do ask questions within the survey to sort of clarify what those groups of people are and where they're coming from. And as I said, 95% were from Bennington, or worked, lived and worked in Bennington.
How can you clarify they're actually in Bennington, from Bennington? They just check, I live in Bennington, or I'm a resident, I own a home, or I don't, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, I, I'm just concerned about people, like I said, people from other towns. If you don't live here, you're not funding the town budget. So as far as people from other towns weighing in on projects, programs, recreation, highway, police, fire, they're not paying the bills.
Weighing in is not a vote, though.
Huh?
Weighing in is not a vote.
And I think with any survey, oh, I apologize, go ahead.
No, that's, I mean, I've heard officials say, well, so many people responded. This is what the people of Bennington want. Well, number one, you can't prove they're Bennington residents without somebody putting a street address on there. And I can see where a project or program could be online, and, well, we had all of these responses. Well, were they local, and were they at least 18?
Well, I guess what I would say to that is, whenever you're putting out a survey, you cannot guarantee that everyone is going to answer, everyone will answer every question truthfully. That's just the nature of a survey.
I guess I'm just local, concerned about making sure it's local only.
Well, so any other, so any other questions on the communication policy? Anyone from the public have a question on the communication policy? All right, we're hitting that moment where I can no longer speak. Yes, it's 8:30. So I would entertain a motion to adopt the, the communication policy for the town of Bennington.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion on this policy before we vote? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Nancy says no. Any abstentions? All right, the ayes have it.
Jonah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the, you did a nice job in catching the intent. All right, managers' report. We're finally here.
Yes, I have a couple of action items for you, but I, I do want to correct myself. When I grabbed that information from the charter to answer Ms. Corales's question, I grabbed the previous charter, not the current charter, and she is correct. The current charter says at least once every five years, the select board shall appoint a charter review committee of not fewer than five, no more than nine. And that was adopted on June 10th of 2019. So we are in the fifth year, so perhaps during June, we'll talk about creating a charter review committee to review our charter.
Yes, we will. All right, we'll put it on an upcoming agenda.
Second thing, the, Sam already took some of the words out of my mouth on the hydrant flushing. Only thing he didn't do was mention the dates, and it's April 22nd through May 3rd. And the water department did ask me to mention that this evening. And the last thing I'll mention that I was asked to mention this evening is, we are currently working to begin the intersection improvement in Hunt Street and Benmont Avenue. If you're familiar with that intersection, it's an obtuse intersection. We plan to make it a 90-degree intersection, and we hope to be informing the adjoining property owners of the plans, and hopefully getting to work on that as soon as possible. Then, back to the action items. Pride Parade, road closures. The annual Pride Day Parade, Day and Parade, which are organized by Queer Connect, are scheduled for June 30th this year. You have the location of the parade itself, which does require road closures for a period of time, 11:45 a.m. until 12:45 p.m. All closures would be from 10 a.m. until 5 p.m., except Main Street, which would be closed from only 11:45 to 12:45. And they're looking to close Pleasant Street from north to school, and School Street from Pleasant to Main. And then Hemmings, the parade will take place from Hemmings to TD Bank on Main Street. I look for a motion to close the streets named above for the dates and times mentioned.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much. The second action item, the town was awarded a $1 million grant that was passed through from us to Shire's Housing for the Gage Street Recovery Housing Project. The, the state is now prepared to award those monies, and has once again asked us for a second resolution to accept the grant, which would require the signatures of the board. I have that document here. Should you motion to accept the grant, I will circulate for signatures.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the grant as requested by the town manager.
Go here a second. Thank you. All right, any discussion?
Yes. This was a property for decades that was a wonderful community care home for seniors. When the owners decided that they were going to close and it went on the market, a small group of people decided they wanted the property as recovery house for men. The people of Bennington knew nothing about this until the last minute and had no say. And I am one of the many Bennington residents that do not think this is an appropriate place for recovery house for men across from the town rec center, so I will be voting no on this grant.
So Nancy, I am going to correct a lot of information there. First, we had a very, very big public meeting on this, which was like amazing for the number of individuals who came together to talk about the need for this housing, for recovery housing, talked about both recovery houses, talked about timeline, talked about the funding process, and took copious input from the public. It was a very public and, and an excellent, excellent meeting. We also had follow-up, because there were individuals in the neighborhood who had questions. As I recall, one adamant opponent to this housing, because it was across from the recreation center, in the end, said that he had been convinced that this was actually in the public good and was very happy that it was going forward. This was, this was absolutely public, and as I am going perhaps have to say more than once, the way boards work is that once a decision has made, is made, whether I personally agree with it or not, the decision has been made by the board. We have our individual opinions, but as a board, we function as a unit. So we approve this, it's gone forward, and the question on the table right now is whether we are going to accept $1 million free and clear to do this work, which we desperately need in Bennington. So that is the question on the table.
So I made a motion, and I think we're waiting for a second.
No, Tom seconded it. We're in discussion.
Thank you.
Sarah?
I can appreciate that you are not supporting this project. I initially did not support this as well, but now that there's $1 million on the table to support this, I'm going to support it. I know that there are many people not supporting this, but I can appreciate you not supporting that, and I, I respect that.
Well, Sarah, I remember you spoke out.
Yes, I did.
And you said, can we take the money and talk about the location? And the other two of the board shut you right down, oh, no. I believe this was in the paper on a Saturday. The select board meeting was Monday night on Zoom. I think the five or six people who spoke, I think one of the five or six lived in Bennington. I had a property owner who lives close by there over a year ago tell me that they wanted to contact a lawyer. I said, don't bother, they've already gotten a grant. So I really think it's up to our officials, and we need to make sure that people in the neighborhood are contacted. Now, do you know if Shannon reached out to anybody?
This wasn't Shannon's project. What are you talking about?
Shire's.
This is Shire's house. This is a Shire's project.
Well, wasn't Shannon working with them as the community development director?
This is, it's a pass-through grant, so we are accepting it so that it can go to Shire's. That's our role in this. We often, as a town, are the pass-through organization for, the pass-through for organizations in town to do their work. So we approved, so we, as, and, yeah, and for most of this funding, it has to go through the town. So we approved the application, we approved the sending in the money, we apparently maybe approved getting the money one time already.
Yes, yes.
And now we're approving it a second.
We were awarded the grant, and now we need to sign, sign an additional resolution so that the money can be released.
Yeah, so that's where we are. So we've had at least five, it sounds like we've had five select board votes on this thus far.
But I can respect your decision.
In, in open session, may I have...
Everyone respects us, Sarah. The point is that we move forward, okay? I mean, the point is that we have all read, so the question on the table right now is, are we going to accept $1 million?
I would vote yes on that.
Okay, so why don't, unless we have other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Nancy says no. Any abstentions? Okay.
I will circulate this for signatures.
Thank you.
And Nancy, your name's on it, you need not sign it if you do not.
Sure.
And that's all I have.
Okay, that's great. Well, $1 million is giving up. All right, so we are up to upcoming agenda. Let's see, the only two things, thank you, the only two things I see on the upcoming agenda are the Bennington Police Department will be coming for their update, and it sounds like we'll have a proclamation for EMS week.
Yes.
All right, other business. Nancy?
Yep, I'm requesting the skateboard park be on the next agenda. I don't know why this has been handled so differently than the playground at Willow Park was handled. The town and the select board never started with a budget, never went out for an RFP because you would have had multiple groups submit designs. Lots of questions about the park, lots of things that need to be nailed down, especially when it comes to phase two. So I think we need to have a discussion, and the public needs to hear this information.
We will reach out to the skate park folks and see if they have anything to update us since they were here last, and if they do, then we will invite, we will invite them in. Okay?
The other thing, I noticed, oh, sorry. In the package, you had something about policies. A year ago, was there a public discussion and a vote by the select board when you stopped letting citizens ask the town manager questions after his report?
So we're following open meeting law and VLCT's guidance, which says that the public needs to have an opportunity to share its thoughts on any action items that the board is reporting on. What we do is allow for public comment, to allow for comments that are other than what's on action items or agenda items. The purpose of the manager's report is to provide information to us that's just like, we're start, we're going to be hydrant flushing, and it starts tomorrow. That's good to know. If there are action items, then if there were, I guess, if, if Sam or Jackie wanted to speak to, to any of those action items. Sorry, well, you're the only two public here. You're the only two public remaining. If, if they wanted to speak on one of the items that we're voting on, they could. That's under the manager's report, but not on the other things, because they're FYI, they're, they're not up for discussion. So, okay, anything, so this is other business, so any other...
So you're going to control what I had tried to ask even in other business?
No, I'm saying, what else is in other business?
Well, I, I just want to point out, for 50 years, this was welcome and encouraged, and I think there are people on the board that want to take away the rights of the citizens. You should vote. Have, have your vote be out there, your name be out there saying, no, we want to take away the rights you've had for 50 years. VLCT doesn't pay our town budget. And all of us in Bennington, we pay for Stu, we pay for the other town... And all of us in Bennington, we pay for Stu, we pay for the other town officials, even before Stu was town manager. Every manager, the public could go in and ask a question. So if we're so inclusive, I don't understand why everybody's worried about the citizens asking a question and getting an answer, especially if it impacts the cost of living in Bennington.
If it, if it impacts that, then you could ask the question, but whether the hydrant flushing has started is quite a different kind of question.
But it's not hydrant.
But again, this is other business, so this is your opportunity to share your other business. Yeah. 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 Sarah?
No, at this point in the evening, I don't.
March 27th is Prescription Takeback Day. So from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. April 27th, March, June.
It's 10 to 9.
April 27th, Prescription Takeback Day, 10 to 2 at the Bennington Police Department. I just wanted to mention that because it's very...
That's great. Do boards and commissions.
I'd like to remind everyone that applications are open for boards and commissions, and those are due on the 15th of next month.
Yep.
Please do apply, we need, we do.
I have nothing, let's go home.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn then.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for the diehards in the...